Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Clovis City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Carrie, set online over there. All right. So, welcome to our meeting tonight. And I would like to invite Mayor Protem Monatua to lead us in the flags, please.
Thanks, Ryan. Join me.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bascal.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessenger.
Pierce.
Councilmember Monatua.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
And Mayor Ashbeck.
I am here. First up tonight is the presentation of a proclamation declaring May 2023 as Older Americans Month. And I've asked Councilmember Pierce to read that for us. And Michelle, if you'd like to come up here and stand at the microphone. And after Diane reads it, you'll welcome make some comments. Bring anybody you want. Bring your friends, everybody. Diane, please.
City of Clovis proclamation, declaring May as Older Americans Month. Whereas, our county includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas, our communities benefit from when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas, both Valley Caregiver Resource Center and the Fresno Madera Agency on Aging recognize the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas, the Clovis Senior Activity Center is a trusted partner and continues to lead the way in providing meaningful programs, activities, and events for adults 50 years and better. And whereas, together, our agencies work to build an even better community for our older Americans by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Clovis City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Clovis, declare May 2023 as Older Americans Month. In witness therefore, I hereby to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Clovis to be affixed this first day of May 2023, signed by Mayor Lynn Ashbeck.
Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you. So, I'm Michelle. I'm the Executive Director for Valley Caregiver Resource Center. And first, I'd like to thank Mayor Ashbeck and all the Clovis City Council for this proclamation and recognizing Older Americans Month. We are honored to be part of this presentation, along with Hillary Bennett from the Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging. Since 1963, Older Americans Month has been a time to celebrate older Americans, their stories, and all their contributions. The annual observance offers a special opportunity to learn about, support, and recognize our nation's older citizens. This year's theme, Aging Unbound, sorry, offers an opportunity to explore diverse aging experiences and discuss how communities can combat stereotypes. We at Valley Caregiver Resource Center are committed to supporting other older adults, whether it be our Oasis Adult Aid Program for those dealing with dementia, or Fresno Madera Abusman Program as they advocate for those living in long-term care facilities, or our High Cap Program as they assist those on Medicare. And of course, our Caregiver Resource Program as they serve those caring for their loved ones. Valley Caregiver Resource Center has been actively preparing for and anticipating the needs of our senior population for the past 34 years. Every situation and every story of a senior in need is different and must be addressed with compassion and respect. We can never assume that their situation is being taken care of by someone else. We must all look for signs to see where we must step in and provide the basic necessities in life. This population is quiet and will not advocate for themselves. This is why I'm grateful for your recognition today in bringing awareness to this great generation. Along with Hillary, we continue to pledge our dedication to meeting the needs of our seniors and family caregivers. All of us here believe the golden year should be golden and free of sorrow, hunger, and abuse, and that our collective work here helps to combat those in Clovis. Again, thank you for proclaiming May as Older Americans Month.
Thank you, Michelle. Hillary, would you like to make a comment?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having me.
You bet.
Good evening. I'm Hillary Bennett. I'm the Program Director for the Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging, and I'm here on behalf of our Executive Director, Jamie Sharma. I would like to thank the City of Clovis City Council for this proclamation and recognizing Older Americans Month. We are honored to be here in partnership with Michelle at Valley Caregiver Resource Center. The area on agencies were established in 1973, and FM AAA is one of 33 area on agencies in California. And we're committed to empowering older adults to make informed decisions and sound choices to increase independence and ensure quality of life through connection to resources. We maintain the ability of older adults to live independently for as long as possible, addressing basic needs and rights of older adults who are the most frail and vulnerable to promote aging with dignity and ensure a safe living environment. We also develop a community-based systems of care that provides services which support independence within California's interdependent society and protect the quality of life of older persons and persons with functional impairments. However, none of these things would be possible without the amazing people that are dedicated to supporting older adults in our area, our case managers, our care providers, our social workers, our nurses, and our volunteers. For we believe that it's people, not programs, that make FM AAA thrive. The Home Delivered Meal Program inside FM AAA works to educate on senior nutrition and provide nutritious meals in-home at our senior congregate sites. The Multi-Purpose Senior Services Program, known as MSSP, strives to protect older adults within home care and avoid displacement. Our devoted partnerships with Central California Legal Services provide free legal support to our older adults in need of legal support with a plethora of legal issues. And Valley Caregiver Resource Center providing a multifaceted approach for older adults. As Michelle DeBudio stated, VCRK goes above and beyond for our seniors, and we're happy to partner with them. As the theme of 2023, Older Americans Month is Aging Unbound, I'm a firm believer in supporting the whole person. Similar to Maslow's Hierarchy of Motivational Theory, we, as willing and able-bodied persons, must support the basic physiological and safety needs for our older adults. This will provide an unbreakable trust and support system to see amazing growth. Without judgment, without stereotypes, but with unapologetic love, anything is possible. Thank you to the Clovis City Council for proclaiming May as Older Americans Month.
Thank you, Hillary.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. So, Amy, did you want to make a comment? As Amy comes down here, as you know, Clovis is...
We're just meeting for the first time tonight.
Oh, hello. Hillary, it's a meet, Amy. Amy, Hillary. Clovis is really, really proud of our senior services. We think it's probably the best in the state, and our new center across the street over there is coming along. So, we are really devoted to making sure Clovis works for generations of folks. So, really happy to partner with both of your agencies. So, Amy, as the manager of our beloved senior services, what would you add?
So, there's really not much I can add to their eloquent expression of what Older Americans Month means for us. Older Americans Month happens every day at the senior center. That's all we do, is take care of those who are just 50 and over, folks, only 50 and over.
Fifty and better. Fifty and better. Work on this.
Fifty and better, and we don't check IDs. So, the center itself is open to over 40% of our Clovis community is 50 and better. So, we welcome everybody, and we're very happy to have partners like FM AAA and Caregiver Resource Center. Without them, we really couldn't do the work we do. We do sort of the fun things, but their two agencies do the real meat of the work for advocating for our older Americans, and we couldn't be more proud to be partners with them.
And I hope in our new center, I know right after COVID, when we had the "We're Back" T-shirt event out in the park, I had a couple folks approach about mental health services in our senior centers. So, as we have more space and maybe more capacity and partnerships with our colleagues over there, we might be able to look at that as well. So, thank you so much, Amy. Anybody else, Drew?
I just want to take this opportunity to talk about our older citizens and sometimes how they're victimized by people. I made a call last week to the police department. My neighbor had been defrauded by someone who was supposed to repair her dishwasher, but he also told her she needed an entirely new electric panel to the tune of $7,000. And she wrote him a check for $7,000. And came and saw me, and I said, "Time out. We need to get a second opinion." And I had an electrician come out, and he says, "Panel's old, nothing wrong with it." And I ended up having to call PD because she had difficulty explaining why this wasn't a contractual issue. Previously, she was on the phone with somebody who got her from Microsoft Support. And she went to the Vons and bought $2,000, was buying $2,000 worth of gift cards. And these people are very good, and they prey on our older citizens. She's a widow. She's a little uncertain at times, and I think this is an opportunity for us to reach out to our neighbors, too, and make sure that they know, hey, if something isn't quite right, it could be your mother-in-law, it could be your mom. I mean, I've had this problem with my own mother-in-law, where we'd have to say, "Don't give that information over the phone." And so, if everybody could take the opportunity, and I know we do this at senior center, to let people know, when a kid says, "Grandma, send me bail money," and you don't have any grandchildren, that's a scam. And that happens all the time. So, we need to protect our neighbors and do our own thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Drew. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you all for what you do. And as the oldest American up here, I am particularly proud of the work you all do. So, thank you so much. Come on up. (APPLAUSE) No, they're just... Yeah, they're really quick. Thank you. Next is Amy, still standing there. The next item is an update on the 2023 Trail Fest to be held on May 6.
Yep. We wear many hats here at the City of Clovis.
I know we do.
So, I'm going to take off that hat and put on an Event Planner hat.
Okay.
So, I'm here to talk to everyone about and remind you that this Saturday is our annual Trail Fest. Trail Fest was an event that began in 2016, and essentially is just a celebration of our beautiful trails in the city of Clovis. We were dark for two years. After COVID, we came back last year roaring. We think we had about 4,000 people out on the trail, and we're expecting absolutely beautiful weather for this Saturday. So, we want to invite everyone to come out to the trail. Trail Fest itself runs all along the northern portion of the trail. There's really no beginning to it. I always say it begins at Sierra and Clovis, right across the street from TI Park, runs north up to Railroad Park, and then at the Wright Station takes that crook around, we call it the Cottonwood Trail, into Cottonwood Park. And then, we will have some vendors and some fun things to do across the street at Dry Creek Park. This year, I'm very excited and really pleased and thankful to my city colleagues that we have every single city department will be represented out on the trail. We'll be doing hands-free CPR demonstration. Dolly the Trolley will be out again this year, and lots of fun things to do for your family and kids. Dogs are welcome, cats are welcome, pets are welcome. Bring everybody on out, get some exercise, and enjoy Trail Fest.
Thanks, Amy. And thanks for taking care of the weather.
My pleasure.
I think it was 96 two days ago. Now, it's raining, so we'll see what next weekend brings. Thank you for all you do, Amy. All right. Next, our public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that has an item to bring to the council that is within our jurisdiction, but not on tonight's agenda. I would invite you forward to do that now. Anybody fall in that category? Anybody online?
No, we only received one written comment. That's right in front of you, regarding an item not on the agenda.
Oh, okay. So, there is one, just for the record. We do have a handful of public comments here. One is an item... Is that the one you were just talking about?
They're all the same.
Well, the first is an item that Councilmember Bessenger was just talking about relative to sort of scams, maybe, on some...
No.
This is different than that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's a neighborhood complaint.
Oh, a neighborhood complaint. So, we have that item in front of us. Then, we have a handful of items on the chicken item, which we can talk about when we get there. But I think the only one that's not related to something on our agenda is the first item. Sorry. Thanks. Okay. Ordinances and Resolutions. With respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution. And unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution or ordinance be read at full, further reading shall be deemed waived by unanimous consent of the calendar... A calendar council. I was on vacation last week, so apparently I'm still a little bit on vacation. Next up are the Consent Calendar items. These items are routine in nature. We consider them with one vote, unless someone from the council or the audience needs to poll or request to poll one of the items. I will note for the record that Mayor Protem Monatua has a conflict of interest on item number 11, so he will remain on the dice but will not vote on item 11. So, our actions will be on 3 through 10 and 12, and then a separate action without Mayor Protem on item 11. Anything you want to add to that? All right. Anybody else on the council needing to pull an item? Anybody in the audience wishing to hear an item separately from the Consent Calendar? All right. I'll bring it back to the council and first entertain a motion for items 3 through 10 plus number 12.
Motion to approve items 3 through 10 and number 12 on the Consent Calendar.
Thanks, Drew.
Second?
So, motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries for items 3 through 10 plus number 12. Item number 11 is final acceptance for final map for track 6225, located at the northeast corner of Ashland and Locan Avenue. Wilson Premier Homes, Inc. is the applicant on this item. Is there any interest in having a staff report on the item? Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this item? Anyone online?
No.
All right. We'll bring it back to the council and I entertain a motion on item number 11.
Motion to approve item number 11.
Second?
I'll second.
There's a motion is second on item number 11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes for aye, zero, no's, and one abstention. Council items tonight, under the first item up is number 13, considering approvals of the Personnel Commission and the Planning Commission. There are two appointments in this item, and I want to make just one quick comment. Councilmember Bessenger's name is on the item. I'm going to talk about the Personnel Commission, and then Councilmember Bessenger is going to talk about the Planning Commission item. And the reason we broke it up this way is the Planning Commission applicants, there were excellent candidates, I think there were 11. We interviewed all of the interested applicants, but several of the applicants were either candidates for previous city council races, meaning they might run again, or candidate that I endorsed, and I don't know what he will do. So, it didn't seem like transparently I could... If I chose him, that would be odd. If I didn't choose him, that would be odd. So, for full disclosure and transparency, I stepped out of the Planning Commission decision and asked Councilmember Bessenger to make that choice. So, that's how we divided it up this time. So, in terms of the Personnel Commission, John, do you want to say anything before I keep babbling?
No.
I'm doing a really good job of just talking. All right. So, the first recommendation on this item tonight is to approve the reappointment of Jerry Brady to the Personnel Commission. Mr. Brady is here tonight. I had the pleasure of meeting him. He has served on this commission for a number of years. This reappointment is for a four-year term of office, which will expire in May of 2027. And that is my recommendation for this body to consider tonight. So, Mr. Brady, thank you for being here. After we vote, you're welcome to say... If you'd like to make a comment up here, that would be great. And I'll turn it over to Drew for the Planning Commission recommendation.
Thank you, Lynn. We were fortunate enough to have 11 very good citizens come forward for the Planning Commission. We've had in the last election, and in this particular appointment, a lot of community interest, which is very heartening, that people want to be involved in the process. The interview panel was myself, the mayor, the planning director, and the city planner. There were a handful of highly qualified individuals, and when we were making our decision, it was a difficult choice. But my recommendation would be to appoint Mr. Joe Abar to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Drew. And thank you again for stepping up and helping with that process. And Mr. Abar is also here tonight. So, any comments or questions from the council?
I think this is for moving forward. I totally support both appointments, but for the future, I appreciate you recognizing the conflict. I just wanted to say, as a candidate going against potential applicants as well, they should also abstain. So, you know, like Drew probably went against a couple of those individuals, just so that it doesn't seem like there's anything as well, if that can happen, for the future, not here. I think this is a great choice already.
We have a hard time paneling a review committee at that point.
Because it was just a precedent cycle, right?
Right. That's why I didn't choose you, because you potentially would run against any of them. So, yeah.
I was talking with... Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was... Because you were conflicted out because of endorsement of a past...
Right. But it just seems like I made my preference known publicly on that candidate, so then that seemed odd to me. And they ran against you, too. So, Drew kind of, with the more experience here, seemed like the safer bet. But in this case, none of us could have voted for anybody. Would have been awkward. It's a good point, though. Trying to be as transparent as we can, but it got a little bit messy. Like, well, let's see, how does this actually work? So, all right. Any other comments? All right. We'll close the public...
I just wanted to make one comment. Just for complete transparency as well, I am concerned about one of the appointments, and that would be for the Planning Commission. I will not be able to support Joe Abar for that nomination. I have two concerns. One, as an employee of the City of Madera, a different municipal government, I'm just concerned that I could foresee some conflicts of interest happening there. But then also, because I think the work that the Planning Commission does is so integral to the future of the city and the direction that we move, I just have concerns that while I know Mr. Abar, and we even went to church together for a while, so I know we share certain sets of values and beliefs, when it comes to housing issues, planning, and development, I think the direction that our community needs to head, that is not an area that I think that we share a philosophy in that, and so that is my reasoning behind that vote.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. Any other comments? All right. We'll close this portion. Anybody in the public besides Mr. Brady or Mr. Abar wishing to comment on either of these appointments? Any... No, it's too late for you to comment. No, I'm just kidding. Anybody online, Carrie? All right. So, I think we can take these as one motion. So, I would entertain a motion for the appointments to the Personnel Commission and the Planning Commission, as reported out here.
Motion to approve the appointment of Personnel Commissioner Joe Abar and... Excuse me. Personnel Commissioner Jerry Brady and Planning Commissioner Joe Abar.
Is there a second?
I was thinking that.
All right. There's a motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries for with one no. So, Mr. Brady, would you like to come up and say a few words and let us thank you publicly for your continued service?
I want to thank you very much. I grew up in the Bay Area, moved here, and fell in love with the city, fell in love with the administration, fell in love with the police department. Matter of fact, I volunteered for several years with the chief and the other chief, and it was great. I loved it, and I... This city is the greatest city that I've lived in, and I thank you for reappointing me.
You are more than welcome. Thank you for serving. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And Mr. Abar, would you like to say something in light of your new role here?
Yeah, absolutely. Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, guests, I'm very honored to be here tonight. I've been a... I looked at the calendar the other day, and I realized it's... I don't know if it's coincidence, but I realize I'm old. And I turn 65 next month, so I don't know if this...
That proclamation was for both of us, then.
...proclamation really... So, I just want to say that I, like I said, I'm very honored for this position, but I'm also very cognizant. I never represented myself in the interview process as a subject matter expert, but one of the things that I do hope to bring to this commission is good judgment and discernment and doing what's best for the city. I've lived in a number of places in my lifetime, and every place I've lived, I've strived to make better, and I intend to do that while I'm on this commission. So, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate your willingness to serve. And just for clarity, Planning Commissioners and Personnel Commissions are never selected because they are subject matter experts in planning or personnel. They really are five citizens with diverse views on our community, and they weigh in on issues that come before them. So, they're a really important part of the planning process. So, to that, I also want to recognize our current Planning Commissioners that are here. Look at all of you over there. I see them. Mr. Hinkle, Amy, and I'm having like a moment. Alma. Oh, my gosh, I had a moment. I was parked next to the parking lot. Wait, who else? I said him first. Hi. And also, our outgoing chair, Mr. Cunningham. Thank you for your service as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Man of Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council guest, I'm very honored to be here tonight. I've been a, I looked at the calendar the other day, and I realize it's, I don't know if it's coincidence, but I realize I'm old. And I turn 65 next month, so I don't know if this.
That proclamation was for both of us then.
So I just want to say that I, like I said, I'm very honored for this position, but I'm also very cognizant. I never represented myself as in the interview process as a subject matter expert, but one of the things that I do hope to bring to this commission is good judgment and discernment and doing what's best for the city. I've lived in a number of places in my lifetime, and every place I've lived, I've strived to make better, and I intend to do that while I'm on this commission. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate your willingness to serve. And I just for clarity, Planning Commissioners and Personnel Commissions are never selected because they are subject matter experts in planning or personnel. They really are five citizens with diverse views on our community, and they weigh in on issues that come before them. So they're a really important part of the planning process. So to that, I also want to recognize our current Planning Commissioners that are here. Look at all of you over there. I see them, Mr. Hinkle, Amy, and I'm having like a moment. Alma, oh my gosh, I had a moment. I was parked next to the parking lot. Wait, who else? I said him first. Hi. And also our outgoing chair, Mr. Cunningham, thank you for your service as well. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, you can go now. I'm just kidding. Or potentially you should say to the very end. All right, next up is item 14. This is considering approval of a resolution declaring the intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2023-24, authorizing the City of Clovis Engineering Department to conduct a property owner Prop 218 proceeding, approving the fiscal year 2324 preliminary engineer's report, and setting a public hearing for June 19th, 2023, or at such time thereafter for Area 1 of Benefit Assessment District, number 20, 95-1. And I do want to note that one of our public comment letters was about that item. Hold on, thank you. Requesting a delay in the Prop 18 initiative, so that we do have one public comment, that item for Mr. Steve Doherty. So with that, magically, you just appeared. Please.
Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to request your approval on two items related to the Black Horse Assessment District. These are typically consent calendar items, but tonight they're administrative items. I'm requesting your approval to begin a Prop 218 vote to increase the assessment for Area 1 within the Black Horse Assessment District. This vote to increase assessments is for Area 1 alone and not for Area 2. A related item is your approval of the draft engineer's report for the district. The report indicates no change in the Area 2 assessment. It also assumes an increase to the assessment for Area 1, which requires your approval to begin the vote process and a passing vote of the Area 1 owners. Joined tonight by phone is Ed Espinoza. He is a principal from Francisco and Associates, which is the firm that the city has contracted with to provide the engineer's report. His firm has been involved with the district since 2015. This slide here depicts possible outcomes from tonight's council meeting. You can decide to either deny the initiation of the Prop 218 vote or choose to approve it. Approving the items tonight allow the Area 1 owners to decide on the maintenance levels for their area. By denial, it eliminates the ability for Area 1 owners to make that decision because there will be no vote. Similarly, if we delay the Prop 218 vote, we will miss the timeline to affect any increases. So whether or not we have the vote, delaying it is just the same as a denial from your decision, okay? So in either case, denial or approval of tonight's action, staff returns back on June 19th, and we request an approval of the final version of the engineer's report, showing the assessments that are going to be carried out for fiscal year 2324. I'll come back to this at the end of the presentation, and I prepared a brief history of this unique assessment district, just to help you, to give you some context, and hopefully help you to make a decision. There's a lot of information here, that the project goes back 25 years, and I intend just to draw you back throughout the presentation to why we're here. We're here for the approval of the Prop 218 vote, okay? So a little summary of the 25 years of the subdivision is, it originally started as a public development. Before too long, there was a desire to convert it to a gated subdivision with private streets, but to not form an HOA, and that's very important. It's a subtle thing here, that there's not an HOA, but there is a Benefit Assessment District, and there are some differences between those two. So the developer worked with the city. We formed a Benefit Assessment District in 1995, and that provides for the maintenance of the public facilities. This is unique in that it is the only district in the city, one of the few in the state in which an agency manages private facilities. Prop 218 took effect after the formation of the district, and that affected the process required to increase the assessments on the district. You might hear some statements, or there might be some emails saying what 218 does to this district, and just want to remind you that the only impact that it has, it was not the bylaws or anything, it just affects the voting to increase the assessments. That's the only effect that Prop 218 has, okay? And that's why we're here tonight. We're here to follow that process, request your approval to initiate the Prop 218 vote. So along with the information of the district came, council, they established the ability to adjust the assessments to keep up with costs, and established the ability to also dissolve the district if that situation ever came up to be necessary. But the district is divided into two areas. Area 1 has access to Minewawa, that's the one we're talking about tonight. Area 2 has access to Eluvio, that one, the budget is secure, we have the funding we need to maintain operations. Area 1 has a budget that is in jeopardy, and we need to really consider updating the assessments in order to maintain the routine maintenance. On this slide here, this is a brief description of the elements that the district funds and maintains on a routine basis. It's important to note that the funds from the private assessments can be used for these maintenance items, but public funds are not legally allowed to be used for these activities. As part of the process, the city hires a management company, and they hire, oversee, and pay contractors to provide the maintenance. The assessments are provided to the city two times a year, typically in January and May from the county assessor, and those are used to reimburse the management company, who invoices the city quarterly, four times a year, for the contractor's expenses. So there's a cash flow issue that we have to manage throughout this whole project. City staff posts the invoices and the budget comparisons from the management company online for the owners to view if they want. Now, there is a lot of information there for anybody who wants to look and try to sift through it. Over the recent years, staff has changed how the information is posted and how it's presented, because we're trying to be transparent, and we're trying to be responsive to requests to make it more clear and easier to follow. There is a lot of information there, and at first glance, it can seem overwhelming. The district budget for city staff, it's largely for the processing of quarterly payments and for bringing the engineer's report to council annually for approval. And that leaves minimal funding for staff to work on making information easy to follow, but we do the best that we can with the budget that we have. By the way, if you've got questions along the way, I'm just going to keep going. If you want to stop me along the way, feel free. This slide focuses on the pavement maintenance that just recently occurred in the summer of 2022. As a comparison, public streets will receive this maintenance about every 10 years. These streets, they did not receive this maintenance until they were 25 years old, largely because of a lack of funding. We just could not afford to do a payment and maintenance. The city was able to include this work in 2022, along with its annual street maintenance project, and by doing so, we achieved an economy of scale, and we were able to get the lowest possible price for this work. If we had gone out separately and just done this project, it would have been more expensive. The expectation was that the city would advance the funds for the work, and we would receive a timely repayment, because the district's budgets were adequate at the time that we started this work. Area 1 was tight, but still adequate when this work was initially put out to bid. In the time between awarding the contract and then getting the final cost for the completed work, the district's contractors had begun to increase their costs for the other routine maintenance items. So now the budget room is getting a little slimmer. The repayment was expected to occur by the end of the current fiscal year in June of 23, but because of the other increasing costs and the decreasing capacity in the budget, this has been delayed by at least six months or more, and that is in order to maintain the existing levels of service and not diminish them. This slide here is for Area 2. I'm not going to dwell on this for too long, except to just say that we have the budget that we need to keep up with the routine maintenance items, also maintain reserve balance, and then to fund capital projects. Now, we spend a little bit more time here. This is Area 1, and these are the two choices that we're going to be faced with. On the left is if we do not increase the assessment, there's a lot of things that have to change. If we do increase the assessment on the right, we are able to maintain levels of service, we are able to do some capital projects, but all of that takes your approval tonight to initiate the Prop 218 vote and to have a passing vote by the owners. And in that vote, should you approve to initiate the Prop 218 tonight, we'll come back, read the ballots in front of you, June 19th. Okay, so just reiterating here a little bit, sorry.
Add a quick question. Why are there two areas for the same? Why is there an Area 1 and an Area 2 for the same neighborhood?
Good question. This was developed in different time periods. Area 1 came about two years earlier than Area 2.
Because Area 2 seems to have like more residents associated with it, which means their costs are cheaper, as opposed to Area 1. I just, I'm not understanding why that wasn't all combined into one assessment area, despite the cost a month, all 120 homes or whatever the number was there. I think it was 120 and something.
Yeah, I know a little bit about the history of it, in that as Area 2 started to develop, there was a, there were some modifications to the subdivision. If you see the border between Area 1 and Area 2, there's now a cul-de-sac. It was originally envisioned that it was going to be a connecting street, but as Area 2 started, there was an idea to separate the two. They're really now two distinct neighborhoods, almost different housing products.
Were they both developed by Gary Mason? Both of them?
Yeah.
It's within the same gated area though, correct?
Though they are two different gated areas.
You can't get back and forth. You can't get back and forth between the two. Okay, keep going.
Okay. So again, just kind of reiterating, this is a potential. Area 2, we're not proposing any change, but Area 1, we are proposing that we change the annual assessment per home from $647 to $866. And again, that takes your approval tonight and a passing vote on June 19th. This slide depicts what our schedule is. We would mail out ballots, well, first off, assuming you approve tonight to initiate the vote. By May 5th, we will mail out ballots. Now, according to Prop 218, the owners have to have 45 days from the day those ballots are mailed before they come back to council. We are just squeezing in, but June 19th makes our 45 days, and we'll come back, and we'll have them read. So just kind of circling back to where I started, this is, these are the two potential courses of action here tonight. You either choose to deny the initiation of the Prop 218, at which point the rate assessments stay the same as they are. But if you choose to move forward with an approval, the decision will lie with the property owners, and they get to vote yes or no.
Is that it?
That is it. Just a clarification on the developers of those maps. The overall tentative map was one tentative map. It was done by Gary Mason. The second phase, which is the blue area on the map, was later sold, I think, to Cambridge, who developed that part of it.
There is a lot here to unpack, and there might be, I'll be trying to take copious notes and just correct facts for you.
So before Drew, just to be clear, you're only talking about Area 1. Why are we even talking about Area 2? That makes it, they're not going to vote, they're not going to, so what, they're not even really in this mix. That's kind of complicating. It's really just Area 1 that we're talking about, that the action tonight is, yes?
So it's two things. The engineer's report and the vote going to go hand in hand. We're saying we're good with Area 2, we don't need to change, but should you approve, in concept, that engineer's report and see a need that, yeah, we need to increase that assessment for Area 1, we need your approval to move forward with that vote? That's, it is a weird thing.
Yeah, I hear you. So but we're not, Area 2 is not even on the table in terms of the action. The vote is only going to be in Area 1.
Correct.
And just to clarify, if I could, it's going to be that the reason they're tied together is because of a single engineer's report for both areas.
Understand.
So you need to consider both of those, but only Area 1 is being proposed for Prop 218, and what the action being taken this evening is just to initiate the process.
Yes, got it. And there is one public comment, as I mentioned earlier. I don't know if Mr. Doherty is, sorry, I'm not saying it right. Doherty is here or on the phone, but there is his letter. Okay, Drew.
I have a question. In the event that the council doesn't give direction for the 218, or the 218 fails, does, do these residents have the ability to create a HOA and do all this themselves? Or is that not, is that not possible, or has it, I'm assuming somebody has thought about this?
Yeah, I believe that was considered at the very beginning. That's why we have the ability to dissolve the district. There'd be a lot of steps that we'd have to go through as we accept the street as public. We would need to make sure it's up to city standards, but thankfully, we just did a sturdy seal, so we've done some preventative maintenance on it.
But Sean, but the residents could.
They could.
They could say, we want to make this an HOA, still retain it as a fenced, as a gated area, and go through all that themselves, correct? I mean, but I don't expect us to spend staff time doing that. That needs to be on them. Is that a possibility? Has this ever been discussed?
We believe it is a possibility, and city attorney Scott, I don't know if you want to weigh in on any of this, but the past discussions have been that it is able to.
Yeah, legally, any residents could get together and form an HOA. I haven't looked in depth at it. I think it might require 100% approval by every property owner in that area, which may be a large hurdle to overcome, but we haven't spent a whole lot of time looking into that. But yes, conceivably, they could form their own HOA.
And this, this situation is very staff time expensive, correct?
When all we're doing is paying the quarterly budgets and moving along and keep, you know, the budgets the same, assessments are good, it really manages itself.
But I'm talking about staff time for this particular project.
For this particular project, it is quite a burden. We've spent quite a bit of time on this.
That was where I was going. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Diane? I just have a couple of questions. Is there anything aside from the number of homes in the areas that impacts the amount per parcel or per property? Because Councilmember Vasco pointed out, obviously, the blue area, I think that's Area 2, has more homes to spread the cost over versus Area 1. But is that the only reason there's a difference, or is there something else there as well?
That's the main reason for the difference. If you look at the graphic, the streets are similar in size, landscaping similar in size. The biggest difference is the number of homes.
And then, has there been an opportunity, because the public comment that is here on this item is apparently just expressing some confusion about how the money is spent for them, and you have a website for it and everything, but is there any other way for the residents to kind of interface, whether it's with the city or the Regency Property Manager, to get that information if it's too difficult for them to kind of process in the online version?
Regency is available by phone, by email. City staff is available by, just the same way we've tried to make ourselves available and explain it as best we can. We must be coming up against, this is the translation, we can't explain it well enough.
It's complicated, and it just is.
Yeah, and there's, if we move forward tonight with a vote, we still have 45 days to answer any more questions. So it really would put it in their hands and still. So it really would put it in their hands and still give staff the opportunity to answer questions along the way.
I was part of a meeting some years ago in these chambers with, I think it was, Regency was new at the time. And I think we tried to sort of work out who was doing what and I don't know how that worked. It seemed like it worked sort of. But maybe, I mean, maybe we could have a public meeting for the residents as well. Because I think it's... This is a very unusual, it's a private thing and city maintains it. It's kind of a good deal in that way. Sort of, not for us, but for somebody. But maybe this city could help facilitate something like that, because I do think it was useful to hear from the contractor directly. And I don't know how long ago that was. I was...
I would just like to say Sean has done a good job of talking with the property owners and in fact, the property owners in Area One have formed sort of a committee, sort of a board, so to speak, even though they don't have an HOA. Sean's had several meetings with them over the last year. And I think that was suggested by one of the council members last year that they could do that. We also have, we had two public opportunities for meetings prior to this committee council tonight. So we are making an effort and I'd also like to point out that Sean has worked on yet another way of presenting the information to try to make it easier to understand. It compares directly the budget with the actuals for the last 10 years. Sean has spent a lot of his personal time doing that and so hopefully that will help. So any way that we can help, you know, with that information, we're trying to do it.
Excellent. All right. Val?
The perception, it looks like we are raising fees. And really, I think that the homeowners need to own it. So notice, they have their engineer provide this report, but yet it's coming for our engineer to make a recommendation per the duties, correct?
No, we are doing all the work. We hire the engineer, we hire the management company, we are running the district for the, on behalf of the property owners.
And then we make the recommendation? I would like a step before it comes to today to go, "Here it is. Do you guys want to go to council?" And so that way, it's more of, "They want us to initiate" instead of just the city. So it looks like they're always against us and we're against them, but really, we're trying to assist. And if the residents say, "Don't even go." You know what? We're happy with $647, okay? And we're not going to get our streets fixed and it's our streets. Because every time we do this, it seems like we're imposing on them and then looking at, reading at the email change. Then it comes to, "Well, if you're doing it, I want to see everything. How come I'm not seeing everything?" So it creates a lot of distrust there. And so how do we make it where the residents own it more? They initiate the Prop 218, I mean initiate as in, they agree to start the process instead of us just saying, "Yeah, start it because we don't have enough money." Is that how it was done before or has it always been us initiating the fee increase on their behalf?
Well, what we do is each year, we take a look at the costs. We try to anticipate if there's going to be any cost increase and we try to figure out if we're going to have enough money to run the district going forward. And once we get that information, we present it to the residents at these meetings. And we make a recommendation to them that because the costs are going up, we need to do this cost increase. Then it seems to go from there. We hope to get consensus at these meetings. We are being as transparent as we can. I know there's a lot of mistrust for whatever reason, but we try to get there.
I think it's an interesting idea. I think the tricky part is the homeowners don't have a... How do you... Did they all get to weigh in? Only some of them? There's no mechanism for them to organize themselves and make sure every house votes. I think because it's sort of this, not an HOA but not a city thing, it's a... There's a reason why there's not many of these in California. This is why. I think that's part of the problem.
I look at the fees and the district administrator gets a whole lot more than we do. And so why can't they rely on who they hired, this district administrator?
Well, we hired on their behalf.
But they don't have a say in who we hire? So we choose it so that they see... That makes it more like that... That's why they don't trust us. You know, here are three applicants. Who do you want? Okay, and you guys deal with them and if your district administrator says you need a fee increase, let us know. We'll just help on this end with...
I just feel like that... If that question has come up at some of the meetings and our property management company has said that that's really one of the differences between the benefit assessment district and an HOA. An HOA that the owners have a lot more participation. And with the benefit assessment district, in real basic terms, they pay their fee through their taxes. The city runs the show. They get their vote, their voice heard at the Prop 218 vote. It's really an odd situation and as I said, it's unique. But in order to have a more, more participation, a stronger voice, you'd really have to move away from a benefit assessment district into an HOA.
So for the hiring of Regency, there was property owner participation in that?
I remember the last.
Yeah.
I think the cost of the homeowners would be higher if they had to form an HOA. They'd have to hire their attorney. They'd have to draw all that up. I mean, there would be a pretty substantial cost, I would think. Not that they couldn't do it if they didn't want to. But I mean, that's not a free deal either. It's, it is really not a particularly workable model, but it is the model on this corner for sure.
Yeah. Just as a means of comparison for some other HOAs, from similarly sized number of lots, the fees are quite a bit higher. Again, economy of scale, they have to get two to three times bigger in number of lots to have similar cost for the same level of amenities. So there is a savings by being in a benefit assessment district.
And 219 will just project a year out or is it three, four, five years out? Do we kind of have that kind of forecast for what we are proposing?
Yeah. That's going to give us coverage for next year and it's going to give us the reserve balance. So that will lead us into the next couple of years. Now, if the contractors hold their costs current with what they're proposing for us now, this will hold us good for a good number of years, but if the market keeps going the way it's going and the contractors raise their prices, it won't hold.
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Thanks for the comment. Matt, anything? All right. We'll open the public portion. Anybody would love to hear from the neighbors or anybody that came to speak on the item. If you just come up to the microphone and push a button that makes the light turn green, give us your name and address. We'd appreciate it.
Yeah, hi. My name is Sam Reed. I live at 45 Chenal in Area One. I guess let me start real quick by just saying, we really love our neighborhood. We have a great group of neighbors. We have really good involvement with what's going on, including the benefit assessment questions. So definitely, we don't want to disrupt any of that. And we also want to make sure we're improving our relationship with city and our city engineers. I know they're working very hard too and I appreciate that. I don't want to come off as somebody that has a lot of animosity because I don't. I'm grateful for what we have. But in the last three years, there's been a lot of bumps in the road. COVID, I know, threw a lot of curveballs, but prior to that, we had one resident that decided to rip out all of our vegetation in our front gate. We had big trees, we had big shrubs. And they decided, for whatever reason, that all that should come out. So when that happened, the city was tasked with, "Oh, now we've got to deal with this." I believe the resident was admonished somehow or they weren't brought up on any legal charges, but they were told to see... I think what I heard was they were issued a cease and desist. I don't know that that happened. But regardless, so what we ended up with is very, we ended up with no shrubs in our little call box area and no shrubs in the front gate. There's two flower beds there that were basically wiped out except for one crepe myrtle. So then the city saw this as an opportunity to go to drought tolerant landscaping, which is fine. I mean, it doesn't match Area Two's at all. Area Two still has big bushes, big trees and lots of plants. We no longer have that. We have rocks. And I don't, unfortunately, I don't have any way to present what it looked like before and after. If you could take the time to look at that and look at some of the history of this, I sure would appreciate it because there's a lot going on here. So what happened though is now we have much less to maintain and our maintenance costs have gone way up, which is a weird... If you look at the tiny patch of rocks we have outside our exit gate and then the patch of, there's a few plants in the front gate, nothing like it used to be. And now they're asking us, what they had asked us for was $9,600 a year. Now they're saying it's $7,600 a year, but they're also including $1,800 a year to water what we have left. I have an issue with that because I don't understand how they are metering. They haven't been able to show me what area are they watering that we're responsible for. If you go back in past reports, every report prior to this year's said that our assessment district was responsible for 500 square feet of landscaping in the front gate. This year, it says 3,700 square feet. So they went back through their maps and they decided that, oh... Because they have been providing landscaping on the grass. We weren't sure if that was done as part of the... Because there is city property all along Miniwawa. There's trees and bushes and things. And I want to know, where's that dividing line? I think we have it now, but then I'd want to know, okay, where's the water dividing line? Where is our, where does our, we get covered? They have done a great job trying to get us bills and receipts for what we're paying for, but I can't find any different receipts for the City of Clovis water bill. It still says Miniwawa, which I think there's only one meter for the whole thing. What was explained to us is they now have a way to just meter the zone that does the landscaping for us. But yeah, there have been, there have been trust issues and that's why we're so upset. So I don't trust that we're being assessed the right amount of water. The biggest trust issue came in 2000 when they did the whole landscaping issue. They had asked us to approve a budget increase and in the budget for that year, they said that they were going to spend $7,000 on gate maintenance and painting, which they did and it was great. They were going to spend $3,400 on landscape maintenance improvements. And then they were going to spend $5,900 on a section of a cul-de-sac that they didn't have to do anything with. And they know they didn't have to do anything with it. They found out later, so they took that $5,900. They added that to the budget to address the front gate landscaping without our approval. You know, we didn't know that. We voted on one thing, they moved the money to use it for something else. So that was the beginning of the...
Mr. Reed, just so that I understand, when you keep saying they... Is it our city staff or is it the district administrator? So that way I understand.
Um, that's where there's going to be a lot of confusion too, because there are city projects and then there's district administration projects. The city project, the landscaping, I believe, was through the city. The landscape change. I mean, Sean can answer that, I guess.
Is that right?
Yeah, the landscaping was a planned capital project that we were going to take on. Same as the sidewalk. Sam, when he's talking about those two, when you say May, you mean the decision was made by the city staff?
Right. So as we started to, we did form a council basically or a group of concerned citizens. So we just have, you know, kind of a single point of contact for all the neighbors. As we started to look into this, it's like, okay, then we started going through and trying to piece together the budget, which is still hard to do. There's some discrepancies in there. But it is much better than it used to be. So given all these, you know, matters of distrust or just concern, I and I think everyone that's here with me, we can't see giving them more money, you know, giving them. The city, the city has not been very judicious with the money we've been giving them, I guess, is our concern. And the whole, you know, who's to say that next year, they say, "Oh, now you're responsible 10,000 square feet." They just arbitrarily changed it. So I don't know. And the idea too, that comment Sean had made about the only part of our assessment that's governed by 218 is the vote part? Nothing else. We were brought in as a proposition 218 and that's where we've been trying to get ahold of the city attorney. They haven't answered our... My wife has been very into this. And at the end of the day, we keep waffling too, because it's only $218 a year. It's not worth my health. I mean, I'm dealing with some health issues already. This is not worth... It's more of a, it's just not right.
Yeah.
It's not the money. It's just, let's just do the right thing, you know? I would welcome, if there's any way the city attorney or somebody can figure out how to make us one assessment district, that would be fabulous. Is that an option? Is that something you could explore?
So...
What would hold us from doing that?
Yeah. So Scott or maybe, I don't know, Mike, Scott, do you want to answer that? What would be the process if there was a consolidation of them into one assessment district?
Uh, we haven't looked into that. So, I mean, that would have to be something that we would have to explore if that's the desire of the council to do so. But maybe Mike can speak to that. If there's different improvements in different areas?
They have fairly similar improvements.
Okay.
But I don't know what kind of buy-in is necessary for the property owners on both sides.
Yeah, I mean, certainly that would require Area Two to also agree, which as has been pointed out, they have more property owners and more votes in that area. So if they wouldn't want to be part of an overall assessment district, then the city couldn't force that on them.
And I think it's a good question. So but the point of doing this now by the June, whatever that date was, what you just described in the world of government could take a year, right? We're not going to get you squared away.
Right.
Whatever that is. So the issue still remains for the way it is now, which is why we're trying to get this in the mail by May 5th, 45 days, right? So that may be a longer term action. Sorry, I just want to make sure. Am I hearing that right? We could deny this and just leave it as is and all those things that are unchecked now, that are checked that we do will stop being done, which may or may not matter. I don't know. Right?
So yes, tonight, we're asking you to approve going out for a vote. During the 45 days, we can continue to provide information to the voters so that they can make an informed vote. As to the 218, before it gets too far in the discussion, I wanted to address that. 218 came along after the benefit assessment district was formed. When initially conceived, this would have come back to council for a council vote, not for a property owner vote, to raise assessments as the city saw fit. 218 came in a year and a half after, something like that, and required us to go out for property owner votes for any time that we need to raise the assessments. So it took some of the control out of the city's hands as far as raising the revenue that we think we need in order to keep things going. So that's what Sean was talking about. The 218 pertains to only to the ability to raise assessments. It's the vote for raising the assessments. It doesn't govern the original intent of the assessment district itself.
So I think your five minutes is a little bit passed up.
Sure, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. But I want to make sure you can finish your thoughts, because you have, I mean, those are good questions and good thoughts and we appreciate that concern.
Okay.
And we don't hear animosity. We just hear frustration. So it's all good. Yeah. Thank you so much. Other comments on this neighborhood question?
Mary, can I follow up on what Mr. Reed just asked? You know, I'm looking at page 57, page 58, sort of the maintenance. It shows there pretty clearly, the management firm is to be responsible for street maintenance. Yet the residents keep saying, and you have also said, "We initiated, we did it." So when I look at "we," meaning the city's responsibilities, it has nothing to do with maintenance. It's sort of, you know, noticing and... And so it makes it very confusing even for us to understand, you know, is it our responsibility to look at it in detail? Like what you have said, these projects, we, the city, will initiate. Or is it really the property manager who they're paying a lot more, like I keep saying, should do these things? They should be overseeing and then they let us know and then we go, "Okay, that's good." and, and then they let us know and then we go, okay, that's good. I, I, can you help explain that some more?
Yeah, the, the property owner, the property management company is happy to take on that level of responsibility. I don't, for the larger projects like the, uh, the Slurry Seal that we did the past year, they come to us and we collaborate and, and agree on it. In fact, they went out and got the original bids, those bids came in really high, uh, a year, a year and a half ago. Uh, so we were able to include them in our large Slurry Seal project and get the economy of scale that Sean was talking about and get those costs down. They weren't as low as we had initially budgeted them, but they were lower than the prices that Regency was getting. So there's collaboration between the city and Regency, even though, you know, they, they were hired to do most of that work, but the day-to-day stuff Regency is doing faithfully.
Okay. Thanks.
Then I have a question. Um, this is, this is a fiscal question. Uh, if the city attorney's office looks at these items, you bill us for that action, correct?
Yes.
And we bill that. And so if, at the request of the homeowners, they want the city attorney to explore X, Y, and Z, then it's going to be up to this council whether or not we absorb those city attorney fees or if we pass those on. So that, that's something, you got to be careful what you wish for. The city attorney is not free and, and we're going to have to pass those, those, at least in my mind, we'd have to pass those bills on to the, the homeowners.
Thanks. Uh, any other neighbors wanting to comment on this item? Just for a show of hands, other folks from the neighborhood here, just to hear the item tonight? Anyone from the neighborhood to hear? Yeah? Okay, all right, thanks, just to get a glimpse, thanks. All right, any other comments on this item in particular? All right, close the public portion, uh, bring you back to the council. Questions before, I think Sean has laid out for us?
Can, can we redirect on some of the comments that were made?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, yeah, Mr. Reed talked about some of the landscaping, he indicated that there was an arbit- arbitrary selection of area or, or whatever. Uh, so though there's a discrepancy, the history is that we've been maintaining a certain area and it's described on the original plans from twenty-five years ago, so it's not arbitrary. And, uh, so we are correcting that with this year's report to more fully and accurately describe what's been maintained and what will be maintained going forward. Um, we already talked about the, uh, the two eighteen and we will get some more information for the residents on the, on the water metering, uh, issues, so they understand how that's working.
And just for a point of clarification, the contract with Regency has performance standards in it, I assume, and we review it every year? Is it a three-year contract? I don't know.
It's a, it's an ongoing contract.
So is it reviewed annually? How is that process? What's that process?
It is, uh, we don't formally review it, uh, annually, but if there becomes, uh, problems with the, uh, with the performance, we will, we will contact them. With this particular property manager, we've had good luck, they're extremely responsive, more so than, uh, the previous, uh, property manager.
Okay, all right, thanks. I saw a hand go up, oh, Mr. Reed doesn't agree. All right, we'll leave it at that. Was it your hand? You know, we closed the public portion, but I'll make an exception, come up really fast. Because we want to make sure we get everything in the space here.
Hi, sorry, first time.
That's okay, me too.
Thank you.
Will you stick your name and address, please? Don't worry.
Um, my name is Paul Shaw, I live, um, uh, sixty-two Chanel. Um, I was wondering if the city has the ability to review Regency, can we as residents review Regency as well? Because yes, they could listen to all the city's, uh, comes, concerns, but if we ask them something, most of the time they say, I don't know. What the, if you don't know, what, why are you taking the lead? Why are you the manager if you don't know the answers?
Fair enough.
Because, you know, like every year, um, as employees, we have performance reviews. Um, so Regency should have a performance review from the city and also from the residents. Not the first time, when they first signed up, they passed out donuts, but that wasn't the first time. After that, it's like-
You haven't seen donuts since?
No!
Darn it!
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense. So I just want to make it fair and transparent.
Point well taken.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Somebody bring donuts next time. All right, I, yeah, we'll close, go back to the closed part of public, uh, portion and refer it back to the council.
I have a question for Sean. Sean, if, if Prop two eighteen, whether we approve or we deny, in other words, if it fails, do we still get reimbursed per your slide where twenty twenty-four with the current assessments will still be reimbursed?
Or we're going to have to cut levels of service so that we can have reserves to pay the city back?
Okay.
I have a-
Sure.
I'm ready to make the-
Go.
Okay. Um, recommend to approve a resolution which will declare the intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, authorize the City of Clovis Engineering Department to conduct a prop- proposition two eighteen proceeding for Area One, approve the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary engineers report, and set a public hearing for June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at which time thereafter for a benefit assessment district ninety-five dash one.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Anybody want to comment on the action before us? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to, to clarify, um, I think it's pretty well understood, but what this action does essentially is give the homeowners in Area One the opportunity to vote and weigh in on whether or not these fees are increased. So my, my feeling on that is, is kind of putting the ball back in their court. If they really have such concerns that they deny the fee increase, then again, it would kind of be another back and forth to figure out what to do from there. Bonn?
No, I, I just feel like when we assess fees, the, it has to be clear, the relationship has to be strong, so that way, even though you may still vote and deny it, you're understanding why it's coming forward and there's a trust in the process and the relationship. And here, I, I feel like that, that has not been established. I read the report and, you know, for the record, you know, we, we were copied on all those emails that were coming back and forth. And I feel like, you know, we're going to be back here next year anyway, let's fix it, let's keep the assessment the same, that way you keep your two hundred bucks, you know, and next year we'll come back and we'll see what we do. That, that's what, where I see and what I see. I know that we can, our vote today only says you can vote on it, but I feel like with us pushing that forward, it, it creates even a greater divide between all of you and us as a city.
Matt, uh, do you have any comment?
I think my comment might be somewhere between these two. So I think what I would say is I'll vote for this if in the next forty-five days, we can hold some neighborhood workshop here with the engineer in the room and, uh, Regency, this is like a flashback, I've done this before, in this room to try to get clear. And your, your recourse is no, you could just vote no on it if you're not, if you're not comfortable. So, and if we can find a way to be clear, I think it's a question of roles, but it's been a question of roles for twenty-seven years, that's what's sort of wild about this. We've never gotten this right, because it's a, are we in charge? Are you in charge? You're not in charge because you don't have an HOA, but we're really not in charge because it's not a city thing, it's, there's no, like I said, there's a reason why there's not very many of these. So I would say we could initiate this, because without that, your, whatever the maintenance is now will decline and the city has a debt that they can't repay that we forwarded to you. So there's a little bit of a problem there. So I think we can move it forward if we can commit in forty-five days to have a workshop and get this sorted out so you see what you get, you get what you see, and then everybody's clear, and then you can tell your neighbors to vote one way or the other. Does that seem like a way forward? If we don't, if we don't do it now, then the clock will run out and we'll be, right?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does voting down this year, doesn't have to go two years before you can vote again? I'm sorry, we want the last one to vote next year, instead of waiting two years. Is that my understanding?
I don't know that.
I think that's the last one to vote next year.
Is that right, Mike?
I, I don't think that's right.
Yeah, I don't think that is, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't believe that's correct.
So we could come back in a year if, if that's what you, that's fine, that's, that's true. But you, you, all your neighbors aren't here, so we don't really know how your, the collective feels. So, I mean, my opinion would be what I just said. Let's move it forward and let's see if we can get a workshop together, get the questions answered, we'll bring food and we'll try to get it worked out. And if we can't, then you can vote no and we'll bring it back in a year. That would be my, um, to, just to kind of see if we can keep it going. So, uh, if that's, that's what I would, that's how I will vote yes on it, Mr. Motion Maker is-
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I would like the ci- the residents to know that if they, there's a no vote, that we're going to throw the anchor out and stop doing some things. So you have to understand there's a quid pro quo. If no more money, we're going to stop doing some stuff. And you're not going to be happy, we're not going to be happy, but we have to be good stewards of the city's money.
So without understanding-
Just to clarify, whether we vote yes, they can still no, and what you, what you just said is still-
One hundred percent.
Yeah, so, so it's not, you know, it, it's not a hundred percent clear or sure that just because we vote yes, we're going to do things, because they can still say no at the vote and we don't do things.
I think our promise to you is we'll get as clear as we can in forty-five days. If it's not clear enough, vote no, and then we'll bring it back next year and then as Councilmember Besenji described, you'll see all those boxes that say we're doing it now or it's getting done now, it won't be getting done. So as long as everybody's clear on what's going to happen. So, all right, if that's, we can have, with that is the understanding of the motion. There is a motion on the floor, there is a second on the floor. Uh, I will call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
All right, motion carries four, one, and we'll see you back here within the next, get it scheduled as soon as we can and see if we can sort this out. Yeah? Thanks for your comments, appreciate it. Next item is, um, hold on. I'm troubled with paper, it's confusing me today for some reason. The next item is, uh, a request to consider the denial of a request to allow backyard chickens in the City of Clovis. You guys just appear at this table, I, I look down and it's there. Uh, staff is George Rodriguez and Aaron Ford.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, just want to provide a brief overview of, uh, a recommendation for backyard chickens, but before I do that, want to cover some background information. Next slide, please. So on May eleventh, uh, twenty twenty, uh, Councilmember Whelan requested staff evaluate amending the city's, um, current ordinance, uh, banning chickens in the city limits. On June first, twenty twenty, uh, Clovis Animal Services presented a brief report on this topic for council consideration to amend the Clovis Municipal Code to allow for backyard chickens. Then in Jul-, in, on July twentieth, twenty twenty, Clovis Animal Services presented a report to council, uh, to amend the City of Clovis Municipal Code to allow for backyard chickens, af- and after a lot of discussion with council, council, uh, decided to bring back the item in one year. Then on April fifth, twenty twenty-one, Councilmember Whelan, um, stated he would not, uh, propose the ordinance again, because the City of Bakersfield had, uh, pursued the same amendments and it brought about, uh, an environmental impact report and possible litigation. On March twenty, twentieth, twenty twenty-three, uh, your council requested an agenda item, uh, to discuss backyard chickens again. Uh, next slide, please. So just, uh, for some context, uh, previous considered code modifications included allowing up to three chickens, uh, no roosters, no licensing or permit required, uh, citizens would be responsible for all care from acquisition to rehoming to disposal, and then chickens would be required to be kept in a backyard in a fifteen, uh, to forty-two square foot enclosure. Uh, it's also important to note that the current municipal code, uh, does allow for parents and children to raise chickens if they're part of an educational program. So whether that's a part of a school program, a four-H program, FFA program, they are allowed to, uh, to be able to raise chickens for that purpose. I'll talk a little bit about our animal response team. Um, currently we have, uh, three staff members in our response team, these are the staff that respond to calls for service, uh, related to animals. Um, we have two full-time animal control officers and one dispatcher slash admin assistant. On the left-hand side, you see a table, uh, which has all the different categories in which, uh, they respond to calls for service. Um, so in twenty twenty-two, they responded to four thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven calls for service, uh, wrote eleven hundred notices, um, or citations, followed up on six hundred cases, and then received nineteen thousand five hundred calls or messages, uh, into the office. And that's, that's separate from our, what goes into our police department, uh, dispatch. Our animal receiving and care center is our shelter facility, which includes, um, a picture of the facility that's, uh, in that photo right there, uh, that was built sometime around, um, nineteen fifty or so. Um, it also, uh, includes the, um, there's a building next to the skate park, it's a metal building, we have kennels in there that house animals, and then it also includes a quarantine, uh, facility to house animals that are sick, uh, we don't want to, um, infect other animals in the facility. Um, so, oh, thank you. Um, so again, two full-time staff, um, uh, run that, those facilities, along with two part-time staff. In twenty twenty-two, um, there were two thousand three hundred and thirty-three animals taken into the facility, uh, seven hundred and eighty-one, uh, of those animals were deceased, and that's important to know, because there is work that is done on deceased animals when they're picked up in the community. Um, there, we attempt to identify, um, an owner and then make contact with that owner to let them know that their animal has been found. Um, there were unfortunately three hundred and thirty-seven animals that needed to be euthanized because of, um, being sick or injured, um, um, or because of some serious behavioral problem that caused danger to the community. Um, at any given point in time, there are anywhere from thirty to a hundred dogs and cats in the facility, um, and all of those animals are, uh, fed, provided, uh, medical care, um, and, uh, provide their kennels are cleaned, um, two times a day. There's also transportation that goes to and from vets for spay and neuters, um, and also, um, specialized vet care. Next slide. So a recommendation, um, staff does not recommend modifying the city ordinance for two primary reasons. Uh, reason one, um, currently we don't feel like we have it, we have, we have inadequate resources. Um, at current staffing levels, it's difficult for animal services staff to care for the number of, uh, pets that enter the facility. Um, animal services already has a difficult, uh, time managing the number of animal-related calls for service. Um, and we have limited capacity, capacity, animal services is often at capacity and is not able to accommodate more animals into the facility. Um, on a daily basis, we are asking citizens to hold on to stray animals, uh, because there is no room in the facility to take them in. Uh, and I, I got to say, our citizens have responded incredibly well, uh, to that approach and, um, are keeping animals for, um, a number of days and with, until we have space. Now, space typically comes as a result of animals going over to the Miss Winkle's Pet Adoption Center, um, to get it, to get adopted. So kudos to our citizens for, for taking that step. Um, and then, uh, we have inadequate facilities, animal services shelter facilities are already inadequate and not suitable to properly house, um, and care for chickens. Uh, we can barely care for the cats and dogs that come into the facility. Next slide. So our second reason, um, we believe that allowing chickens would, uh, cause an increased demand for resources. Um, so allowing chickens would, um, lead to an increased number of calls for service for our two animal control officers in the field. Um, we'd have to build some kind of new structure or facility for chickens that would, and that structure would have to be, uh, properly, um, heated and cooled in order to house the chickens. Um, and then there would be an increase in euthanasia, so chickens would come to us and they would, uh, be injured or, um, sick and require our staff to then, um, to then put them, put them down. Um, there's also an increased risk, uh, of disease, um, as reported by professionals in the field, backyard chickens, um, increase the risk of a disease among both fowl and also people. Um, strain on police resources, um, allowing chickens would require community service officers and police officers to- and police officers to respond to more calls for service. Keep in mind that our animal control officers are generally on from 8 o'clock in the morning till 4 o'clock in the afternoon, seven days a week. Anytime after that, our community service officers and police officers are taking the animal calls. If our staff, animal control staff, happen to be sick or they're out on training or on vacation, again, the community service officers and police officers are responding to those calls for service. This concludes staff's report. And Aaron and I are here for questions.
Thanks, George. Other questions for George or Aaron?
Excellent report. But, you know, I wish this information was in our packet because it would allow those who are for it to be able to see and offer solution and/or responses. Because I think it's very short in the packet that was given to us. And so it makes it where... You know, it's a long report, it's a long slide, yet the actual thing is only two pages. And so I want us, when we present something to the public and if it's detailed and there's legitimate reasons, I think we owe it to the public to get more information. So that way they can come and say, hey, police is this. You know, what about raising fees and what we can do? And how does that help? And how many homes with chickens can provide for one officer, whatever? And so I just wanted that, first of all. With regards to staffing... No, sorry, my throat is just so itchy. Would one extra officer be able to handle it? Two, three, you know, the increase? Because if you go back to that page, how many responses for chickens? There was a chicken line. Okay, oh, right there. Right there, 37. And so I know that there'll be other calls. This is just for calls because our policy doesn't... Our ordinance doesn't include it.
Correct, correct.
But, you know, what's the anticipation, realistic anticipation to be able to handle it if this passes?
I don't think that's known. I don't think... You know, I don't want to guess. I don't know. We probably have to do some research and look at other cities and see what kind of increased demand that they've had as a result of passing ordinances to allow chickens. So I don't know the answer to that.
And with regards to the facilities, I think that's the first time I heard that one. That's an excellent point. And do you know potential cost of the upgrades or what we would need? You know, you mentioned a couple of it, but have we looked at other cities gone who have the ordinance gone? Oh, you know, they need a facility this certain size in order to...
Yeah, we have not looked at costs. We have not gotten into that much... Did not much research to be able to evaluate the costs associated with that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Juan. Any other questions, Stan?
Yeah, it was referenced that one of the reasons it didn't come back from Councilmember Wayland, and I think it's 2021, was because of the city of Bakersfield and their current situation with environmental impact reports and potential litigations. In roughly two years since then, what's the status of that situation with Bakersfield?
So I'm going to defer that to our city attorney.
Yeah, thank you, George. We did look into the city of Bakersfield. So what we understood happened, I think, in 2021, the city of Bakersfield council approved an ordinance change. I'm not sure exactly how their animal stuff is set up, similar to Clovis's, but they, in essence, approved allowing backyard chickens in some manner. I believe they actually did address CEQA in that approval. My recollection is they might have found an exemption under CEQA, but they did address CEQA in some manner. And then a group of citizens threatened to sue because they had failed to do a full-blown environmental impact report. And then I believe the city council then rescinded their approval, basically to avoid the issue altogether. So, and they haven't gone forward since.
Any else? Matt?
For the city attorney. So basically, what you're saying is in order for something like this to go forward, it would require a full EIR?
I don't know that it would... I don't know that I can answer right now whether it would require a full EIR. But some level of environmental analysis would have to be done to determine whether or not, number one, I think an ordinance amendment to address or allow backyard chickens would be considered a project. So that's the first step. Is it a project that would be subject to CEQA? Then there's a determination as to whether an exemption would apply, whether there's certain mitigation measures that might be needed. But that analysis hasn't been done. We would have to do that if that's the council's desire to go forward with that. So you can identify maybe a handful of potential items that might be environmental, noise, odor, health issues, increase in predators that would be coming into the city limits because there would be prey available for them, potential facilities needed. Those are some of the issues that we would have to look into further if the desire is to go forward with chickens.
Thank you.
You know?
I had a couple... Sorry, the coughing threw me off, so... You know, I wanted to ask, is health and disease a concern at all of the staff?
Yes.
Okay. And then have we taken into consideration size of homes at all? Should it go forward? Are we limiting it at all as a staff? I know the recommendation is denial, but should it go, is there any thought with regards to it has to be a certain square footage home?
Yeah, we did not indicate the last time that it had to be a certain square footage of home or size backyard. We indicated needed to be a certain number of feet away from the fence and away from the structure.
And any consideration with the economic argument? You know, I guess this is just us denying, just anticipation of, you know, right now eggs cost so much. And that, is that any consideration of which we as a city should go, okay, potentially we can help food-wise? Or even for those... I mean, we've heard some of the arguments. So like, it's good for teaching children. It's good for, you know... Are the resource costs outweigh any benefit? Is sort of what we're seeing?
I'm not sure I can answer that question.
I think it would be safe to say the staff's recommendation is denied. They didn't spend a lot of time on any other factors and their opinion would outweigh what they've concluded. I think what I would say. I mean, so yes, those are things. But I think that's... If this goes forward, those would be things that you could research. If that's how it ended up.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if the council decides to, you know, move forward and wants us to bring back a more thorough presentation with a much deeper analysis, then we would look into all of those things.
And then my final question. If there's enough resources, meaning money, to pay the officers, then it's yes? Then it's, do you support it? Because that seems to be the main argument in this report that I see. So let's say we pass next year a tax measure and...
Now you got the money.
You know, is it then? Then we go, okay, now we got resources. We can support it? Or... Because I want to know...
It's resources and I think it's facility.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so if we got the money to cover all that, then PD would be in support of it? Because it seems like it's only a money issue.
Well, it's a resource issue, a facility issue. And the facility issue is, I mean, the facility issue is significant as well. I mean, we don't have adequate, you know, space or location to be able to house chickens. Right now, the chickens that we do receive are being housed in dog pens. You know, and we currently have to house dogs and cats in the same location stacked on top of each other. So I think it's a much larger question about, you know, building... Are we prepared to build what we need to be able to house chickens? And then also house the other animals as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, George.
I do have a very quick fiscal question. I don't know if this is city manager or police chief. We're still paying money towards the existing Miss Winkles, right? We haven't paid that off. So even if we approve that and let's say money fell through the skies later, we still have bills that are due on our existing facilities. So it would have to be a whole bunch of money to fall from the sky. Because we got to pay off what we got first.
I'd like to see that, just generally. A general principle, it'd be good to see money fall from the sky. All right. Open the public portion. Anyone wishing to speak to this item? Just for fun, show of hands, how many of you have heard or speak to chickens? Or for the chicken item? Yay! How many of you are in favor of chickens? How many of you are here opposed to chickens? Oh, it's a tie. All right. Well, you're all welcome to speak. And if the person before you says something that you were going to say, you don't need to repeat it. You could just say, I agree with them. But begin, please. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. Why don't you have it to the clerk? Please. Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Meyer. I live at 88 Tammy Court off Temperance and Sierra. Those are ordinances. I believe one has ANA for Anaheim and one for ANT for Antioch. There's a city ordinances for chickens allowed in residential areas.
Do you have two piles? The same pile? Anaheim? Oh, I'm sorry, they were attached, they're on Antioch.
Did I get enough for everybody? I'm not quite sure.
We can share. All right, go ahead.
All right. So I'm here in support of the chicken amendment today. I truly believe the city of Clovis should be able to make something positive about all this. So I'll start off with the city of Anaheim. In the city of Anaheim, you're allowed to own hens, one per every 1,800 square foot on your lot without any permit. Anaheim's population density is a little over 6,829 people per square mile. Now, Antioch also allows up to 10 hens without a permit. They sit at just under 4,000 people per square mile. Long Beach also allows up to 20 hens, with permits only required after you have more than five. Their density is 9,191 people per square mile. Clovis's density in 2020 was 4,657 people per square mile, without taking all the time of tonight. I'll go ahead and just list some of the Californian cities that allow hens as well. These are not counties, but actual cities. I know last time I had put some counties. So this time for only cities, we have Oxnard, Orange, Pasadena, Antioch, Anaheim, Ridgecrest, San Luis Obispo, San Marcos, Santa Clarita, Santa Fe Springs, Santa Monica, West Hollywood. And literally tons and tons more. I could go on. Of course, these cities have restrictions covering the chickens. And some of the ones we proposed would handle almost all the complaints you've heard up here tonight. If someone doesn't want their neighbors to own hens, they shouldn't be allowed to own them as we agreed in 2020. And also, I believe in 2020, there was a proposal for a 5,000 square foot minimum lot. I'm not sure, did I spell that right?
There was... You're right, though. Is your name David?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed the first name. Yes, we talked about lot size. We talked about setbacks. We talked about how close they were to each other. So we did have those conversations. We never kind of finished that. But you're right, you are right about that.
All right. And then, you know, if someone doesn't want them in residential quarters, I agree with that. If a neighbor says, I don't want to... I moved to the city for a reason. I think they should have a vote for that. So I think that is fair. I'm sure most of us here would agree with that. So also, we have compromise here. We'd have rules preventing lots of small lots from owning hens. And most of the citizens of Clovis probably wouldn't be able to. And best of all, you could have permits, possibly profiting the city or maybe putting off maybe one extra animal control officer or two, whatever we could do. Some sort of permit of... I know the dog permit only gets about 10%. I spoke to you before. Only 10% of people actually pay for their dog permit fees, which I believe we could get that up a little more for chickens if we... I don't know, maybe put it out there more. But I think chickens are a little different, especially if they have them in the front yard or something fines will deter people from hiding from that. And dogs are just a little different in that situation. So I honestly don't see why these cities could make it work, but we can't. And I think it's a pretty bad excuse on our end for citizens to not be able to have a say in this. I think at least we should have a vote or some sort of say where the system is going to take back their right to own the chickens. Tons of other cities' leaders have been able to figure out how to make it work for their citizens and paved a way to sustainability. I'm just hoping you guys can do the same. I'm hoping we can get something figured out here. We're losing more and more of our true Clovis way of life daily. We see more and more cement into the city every single day. Bonadelle is building out Passa-Macall area every day. So we lose more farms, more eggs, more cows every single day in Clovis. And I'm hoping we can just get a little... This is just a tiny, tiny portion of it back. I know our city is going to keep growing and we'll keep getting progress in more two-story homes and stuff. But I'm hoping we can just get this tiny piece back and kind of go back to the real Clovis way of life. And I do have some concerns for the chickens in Fresno because one of the main concerns with chickens in Fresno is the heat. The heat is crazy out here. So I hope you guys do have restrictions, if it is accepted, to protect chickens and make sure that citizens do properly care for chickens. And of course, permit fees to make it where, you know, if someone's going in there for not the right reasons, they're kind of put off by the permit fee. And see if we can get the right people owning chickens and the people who don't deserve them to not have them, but not a total ban on everybody. And that's pretty much it. That's why I'm here tonight, just hopefully get a little bit of Clovis back.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your comments. And you're willing to compromise in there somewhere. Anyone else wish to comment on chickens? For or against? Go ahead.
Hi. I'm Angela Bates. I'm at 1214 Karen in Clovis, 93612. I believe I've met the others, but I've just met you tonight. Anyway, so I did cross off the things that I heard him say. So hopefully these are just newer things. Okay. Where am I starting here? Okay, I did notice, I did want to comment on the 37 chicken calls. I looked at it very carefully. There are hundreds and hundreds of dog calls and feral cat calls. I really think that's where their focus should be, not so much on detouring people or trying to prevent people from becoming a little more self-sufficient. We see where this, where not just society, but the, you know, the United States as a whole or the world as a whole is going. I think we need to get ahead of it before you have a bunch of people scrambling last minute. We already know that people have chickens in Clovis. I mean, let's face the fact. And how many, if I can ask a question, how many, I mean, are those 37 calls because you have a neighbor that's complaining about a rooster? Or a neighbor that's complaining about a chicken laying an egg? Or the smell? What exactly are, were those 37 calls about?
So if you go back to that slide, there are calls, the 37 calls for chickens. There's a specifically designated chicken call from someone who is concerned for something regarding chickens at a property. There are also chicken and rooster and/or rooster calls that fall into a number of other categories, including animals at large, deceased, sick, stray, noise nuisances, injured, hit by car, welfare checks. Let's see, what else have we had? Farmed exotic animals. I mean, they don't just fall under the chicken category.
Right. I'm just asking for that. Do you have a clarified answer as to what those calls were specifically about?
Not on hand.
Okay. So... I think that kind of speaks for itself. Um, they're here to say no, but they don't have, you know, if people are complaining, they don't have, uh, any written documentation of that. Um, again, trying to get ahead of it. If there are already people that have chickens, now's the time to say, okay. It's like with marijuana, people were smoking marijuana.
That's a really bad example.
It is a horrible example, but what I, but look, look, I mean, you, they're gonna do it regardless, right? So you wanna get ahead of it, right? Make money off of it. That's what Fresno and Clovis did, or California, should I say?
Clovis did not do that.
Well, you know what I'm saying. Okay, 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 I got you, I got you. But California basically approved it to make money. They saw it as a big money thing. Anybody raising chickens doesn't do it, I mean, seriously. They're not doing it to save seven bucks on a, you know, on a thing of eggs. Um, anyway, moving on, the four H was mentioned, um, that they were able to have chickens. Okay, so I have a granddaughter that's three and a half. She would know absolutely nothing other than Fresno State or the zoo. How is she supposed to be interested in four H? I don't come from four H. Thankfully, my husband does, but I don't. So how are the kids who love farm animals supposed to be introduced to them to continue four H in Clovis if they're not introduced to these chickens? Chickens is, is like an entry animal, you know? I mean, then they get interested in other things.
Just like marijuana.
And I go, yeah. We're connecting here, we're connecting.
I couldn't resist. It was like such a great opening, sorry.
Um, okay, another thing, they, they were comparing, he made some great, Dave made some great compar, you know, comparisons. I wanted to say, we're Clovis, we're not Bakersfield, we're not Selma, we're not Anaheim, we are Clovis. Let's continue to make our name known, we're Clovis and we can have these things and still protect our beautiful town, you know, our beautiful city. We can do that, have some faith in us. I, I don't understand why we're sitting here saying our, our citizens can't do it. We're obviously doing it if you only got thirty-seven calls. So, just my thought there on that one. Um, and then the last thing, um, was why should, why should our citizens of Clovis be told not to teach our kids, not to attempt level of self-sufficiency, um, because of irresponsible dog and cat owners? I love all animals, insects, reptiles, maybe not, but animals furry, feathery, yes. Dogs, they provide security. They provide a, a, you know, they're dog's best friend or man's best friend, right? A company, companionship. Cats, they don't provide anything and I have cats, okay? I love them, but they don't really provide you anything other than a comfort or companionship. Chickens, they provide you with that same companionship. They also provide your family with food and they could provide with security if they stay on your property. But I think we have enough things that we can discuss that, that'll keep that in place. We're willing to do it to have, to have chickens. Give us an opportunity to prove it. Don't just shut us down before you give us the opportunity.
Thanks, Angela. Appreciate it. We've now just renamed chickens Gateway Pets. Um, let's let anybody else have a turn, then we'll come back. Do you, anybody else wanna talk about chickens?
Hello.
Hello.
Julie Cutka, six seven nine, West Indianapolis. Um, so I agree with city staff's recommendation of denying backyard chickens. Um, as someone who lived part-time in the country, um, and we had a neighbor bring in chickens next door and even though they weren't right next to our property, they were a nuisance. The smell was atrocious and it was really great, like walking out there and, um, having to pull a chicken out of my dog's mouth because the chicken got out, so that was fun. Um, I grew up actually out in Stanger, but in the city of Stanger, so I was actually exposed to four H. Um, but it wasn't through my friends that lived out in the country, it was actually through the school. I wasn't a part of four H, but like I said, I was exposed to it. We had, um, out in Stanger, we had a farm out there with like goats, like my godson, he actually has like a sheep out there, um, right now. Um, so, yeah, but, um, I was gonna say, as someone who, um, comes to a lot of these meetings and listens to everyone say that they want the Clovis way of life, um, I, I would have to say it's the Fresno county way of life being brought into Clovis because we are in the city of Clovis. City of Clovis does not allow for chickens unless under certain very strenuous like circumstance, right? As an individual who purposely chose not to live on the outskirts of, of Clovis and who chose not to live in the county of Fresno, who is still choosing not to move to the city of Fresno, who's waiting for the right house to be built in Clovis, um, I just have to express that. I am not in support of it. I'm like, uh, staff has even brought up like the illnesses and I just, I, I just don't want that within my community. Um, I do believe that there could possibly be a, a, um, some type of compromise of talking with your neighbors, but I would be the person that would be calling constantly against it because, I'm sorry, I just don't want, I don't want my lab who, you know, they're, they're, they're gonna be labs, they're, they will hunt my German shepherd to go over there and then for me to go out and have to pull another chicken out of like a dog's mouth or something. That just is not, not pleasant. Um, so, yeah.
Thank you.
That's my, bye.
Appreciate it. Excellent, thank you, appreciate your comments. Anyone else wanting to weigh in on this item? We do have the letters that I mentioned earlier, um, anybody online, Carrie?
Yes, I have one individual. Patrick, I am requesting for you to unmute your mic. Can you test it?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna say that, you know, the chickens are not gonna be a flock raised for production of food and whatnot. They, they would be more of a pet.
Patrick, Patrick, excuse me, you, um, your microphone, I think, is, um, it's really hard to hear you or the, I can't understand you. Did anyone else hear what he said? It's real garbled, so I don't know if it's your microphone on your computer or your phone or whatever. Carrie, do you have any ideas to help him?
I want chickens for pets.
He's for chickens as pets, okay, that, that's good. Thank you for your, your call. Sorry that the connection wasn't better. Anyone else online?
No, but for the record, Patrick did submit a, um, a written comment in support of backyard chickens.
So we have, uh, comments, just for the record, from Mr. Henry, opposing chickens, from Mr. Whipler, opposing chickens. Um, hold on. Hmm, I don't know who this is from. Oh, Stephanie Storm, allowing chickens. Nora Silva, opposing chickens. Patrick Shear, passing, supporting chickens and, um, Linda Shear, assuming related to Patrick, also in favor of chickens. So that's what we have is public comment. All right, anybody else who hasn't already spoken, I wanna talk about chickens. I'll give you the last story, David. I do. Just gonna talk about gateway chickens. I am, I, well, you, you, you're perfect, perfect setup for me, so thanks for, thanks for doing that.
All right.
Real quick, one minute.
All right, so to deal with issues where neighbors don't, um, want chickens, I'd like to reiterate, we'd love for neighbors to be able to say, like have a vote. If all four neighbors say yes, then go ahead, get chickens. If all four neighbors say no, if even one says no, then no. That's a person's choice, if they wanna live in the city, they wanna avoid chicken, that's their choice at the end of the day. I do agree with that. So I just wanted to lay that out there. And I just wanna lay one more thing out there at the very end. Um, I think this could work very well if we just follow restrictions like San Mateo, San Diego, Long Beach, where they have custom, custom coops, they've got fines, they've got restrictions. They got tons of stuff that they're doing that's handling it, fine. And unfortunately, I, the first time I've ever had to say unfortunately for this, but unfortunately, I went to Clovis High, so we didn't have a four H program. We never got to really interact with farm, farm animals or anything. But I know at Clovis East, there was a really good four H program. So I always wanted to go there and I know there was like a transfer thing, but I never got to. So I'm hoping we could just get it back to the city and maybe the schools too and just get the kids back in playing in the dirt instead of playing on phones and stuff all day.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll close the public portion of, uh, on this item and bring it back to the council, uh, for discussion.
Uh, when I moved here in nineteen eighty-four, there were sheep, there was a sheep farm at Shaw and Fowler. Uh, there were horses at Toll House and Sunnyside. Um, cows on the north end, we've had, you know, we definitely had those roots. Um, it's not necessarily bringing, as Julie said, bringing the county way of life back to Clovis. Well, we already had that. Unfortunately, times have changed. Um, I'm a consumer of fresh eggs. My wife goes specifically to a place for that purpose. They are superior, uh, but I will be voting no. And, uh, increasing it just out of concern for the additional staff time which is going to take to police this and the neighborhood construction across the fences. So I, I would, I was gonna vote to deny it.
Other comments on this, Matt?
Yeah, well, I'm sympathetic to wanting to have chickens. Um, my concerns are the staffing concerns, um, the health and safety issues that are brought up and then most specifically having to go out and get an ERI, EIR done. Um, the cost of that with the city attorney's office, um, no guarantees that that would even pass to be able to do it and we would be putting out of a lot of expenses, um, from the city in order to do something like that. So, um, for those reasons too, um, I'm gonna support staff's recommendation, um, to deny this.
Other comments, Diane?
I actually think what David and everyone said is really important because I think that as a community, I think we actually could come together and resolve of the majority, maybe not all, but at least the majority of the concerns on either side. Um, and I do think there is a way to look at other communities that have successfully implemented these things and draw on those things and again, be looking for areas to compromise to kind of bring everyone together on it. So I commend those in support of it who are open to that kind of compromise, but, um, I do feel that with public safety being what I believe to be the top priority of us as an elected body, um, and the staffing situation that we do face specifically in our police department at this time, that it is my responsibility to more heavily weight those concerns and that aspect of this issue. And so for that reason, not because of anyone who's in favor of it or, like I say, I agree with so much of what you said and even the people who have their concerns, I can see both sides. But for me, the issue is really more on where we are from the city staffing in our police department situation. And I don't feel that it would be right for me to put that burden on the staff to kind of sort it out at this point in time. But I do want to say also that if there is any way, Lynn, I know you, a lot of times when, um, we have our partners from Clovis Community College here, we're like, let's figure out a way to partner on this. I think the idea of introducing our young people to four H programs, to FFA is so fantastic. And if there is a way that out of this, we could have some way to, um, look into that, whether it's through Clovis East and what they do, making sure that our elementary school kids and that, you know, they do field trips to the zoo. I, I hope maybe if they don't, that we could see about getting more exposure for them to those types of things because I think there's incredible value in that as well. But at this time, again, I feel it is my responsibility to, um, listen to our city staffing concerns and, uh, be in support of the denial at this time.
Vaughn, are you okay?
Yeah, I don't know. It's the chicken curse.
Right, cause are you sure it's the chickens?
I, I think last time we spoke about, uh, what David brought up with regards to, you got to get your neighbors to be okay before it gets approved. Um, I, I just think we don't have enough information here and I would have voted yes and to go find out how others have done it and how we can do it in a more efficient, better way than the, these other cities. Cause if other cities can do it and if they're, last time, I think there was even less people who wanted it and, and this time, there's a, a larger group of residents who wanted it. And I think, you know, our, our, our job is to find an answer to how to get there. And with regards to the resources, I, I believe that, you know, we, we are responsible for that. We are doing what we can to provide what police needs to do their jobs. And I think, I don't see it as gonna be a big burden on police, but, you know, I don't work there, so I, I trust them on that. But we, we can find the resources. So I, I'm in support of it.
So thank you all for being here. And I was gonna apologize in advance because I, I think last time I made some really horrible comment, like I would never vote for this in my whole life, something to that effect. And that really wasn't very fair, so I'm sorry about that because I did wanna hear what you said tonight. And I think you, I mean, you do make some good, some good comments. I think at the end of the day, for me, it's really, it's resources and facilities are one thing, but it's a little bit more about sort of the community good as a whole. If you all say, "I'll take care of my chickens," that's like three of you. But if the other sixty-three that don't take care of their chickens, that's what we have to try to balance. And I think that's, that's what worries me. So you are, you are right to say if your neighbors don't agree and Julie says no, talk about escalating a conflict because then the answer is, heck with you, I'm gonna do it anyway. And then Julie's gonna keep calling the police, not for chickens, but for neighbors. And to me, it's a cycle that I don't know how to manage. Now, that's the third grade analogy, right? One kid talks, nobody goes to recess. It's a little bit like that. But I just think from the community good perspective, I, I can't help but think there are more people that would think this is a bad idea than would take care of the chickens just like their dogs and cats, right? We, we have lots of feral cats, all of those are issues. So I just don't see for the good of the community today. Now, could we have, don't panic, could we have, we have Miss Winkles? We have the Wildlife Center coming in. Could we ever have a city farm? I made that up, I have no idea. With Clovis Community College or, I don't know if there's a way to do that in our community, not today, but down the road. So I think all of your points about teaching our kids about where food comes from because it does not come from Vaughn's or Winco, totally get that. Um, but I just don't think the solution is the chickens. So I've, I wasn't in support of it during COVID for sure, that seemed like a really bad idea. Um, but I just think given the state of our police department, I just can't see adding the conflict caused by humans. It's probably less about the chickens, it's about the human conflict that's gonna come from people not doing what you all said you would do, would just take care of your chickens. So I will also be, uh, upholding the, the denial. Not that we can't visit it again someday, but I think in today's world, unless the money comes from some unknown source, I just don't see a way that it's for the good of the whole. Our neighbor, our lots are getting smaller. Our neighborhood are not, we're not big, we're not building fifteen thousand square foot lots, we're building four thousand square foot lots. So what if they want a chicken? It just, there's no way to manage it, I think, that would work. So enough of that. So I will entertain a motion to, um, I guess uphold the denial on this request to allow backyard chickens.
Uh, motion not to hold the denial regarding backyard chickens.
I don't know where the verb comes from. Sarah Second?
Second.
There's a motion to second to deny this request to allow backyard chickens to city Clovis. All those in favor, if you can say aye, aye, opposed?
Me.
Motion carries four one. Thank you for your work, thanks for being like, like a good citizen. I see you on the Nextdoor app, talking about chickens and this and that. So thanks for being reasonable and calm and appreciate you being here. Yep, you bet. And thanks staff for their work. All right, next item is to consider items associated with the annual military equipment report. Uh, annual review of the ord, of ordinance twenty-two dash oh-three, Clovis Police Department Policy seven zero six and the twenty-twenty-three annual military equipment report. And the second action is, uh, approval, renewing ordinance twenty-two dash zero-three and Clovis Police Department Policy seven zero six. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thank you for allowing Chief Fleming and I the opportunity to present the annual military report for twenty-twenty-two. In addition to the report, there should be an attachment for the updated Clovis PD Policy seven zero six, which reflects the addition of equipment that has been added since twenty-twenty-one original policy. Chief Fleming and I are requesting the approval of the twenty-twenty-two annual military equipment report and the updated policy under policy number seven zero six. Policy number seven zero six has been updated with some additional equipment that was different in twenty-twenty-one. The reason why there was an update is there was equipment that was overlooked during that initial time in twenty-twenty-one. In addition to, we had purchased some less lethal, um, pepper ball systems prior to the twenty-twenty-one, but now we are going to place those pepper ball systems into service in twenty-twenty-three. It's my understanding you have copies of the report, either a hard copy or electronic copy, and I'm gonna present a brief summary of the reports. A brief history of Assembly Bill forty-one, AB forty-one was created in September of twenty-one and governed all law enforcement agencies to authorize policy which identifies specific equipment owned by the agencies and used during calls for service. In addition, it governs all agencies' approval from the governing board prior to any future purchases. purchases. The Clovis Police Department is committed to maintaining public safety by providing the highest quality police services to the community we serve. We have an obligation to our community to never let those who would engage in violent acts of criminal activity dictate the path of life in our city. The mere possession of this equipment does not warrant its use in every circumstance. However, having this equipment and adequate resources available makes our department more capable of confronting those who would threaten violence upon our community and threaten the Clovis way of life. If you look inside the report from pages eight to page twenty-six, that identifies the military equipment that the department currently possesses and owns. Looking at page twenty-seven is the military use summary. This is the number of incidents that was documented in twenty-twenty-two. That number is low, which is good, but just because the numbers are low does not dismiss the importance of having this type of equipment for peaceful resolutions and also public safety and the safety of the community. It's not a matter of if, excuse me, it's not a matter of if the circumstances may occur, it's a matter of when. For an example, during the first quarter of this year, we've already had seven swap call-outs where we've utilized increased equipment to have peaceful revolutions and increase public safety. On page twenty-nine, during the calendar year of twenty-twenty-two, we do not have any audits or complaints that stem from any equipment under the military bill. And on the second to last page, we are currently evaluating and looking at three new acquisitions that could be purchased if the chief approves during the twenty-twenty-three year. Those acquisitions would fall all under equipment involving UAV and drone equipment, and at that time, we're not looking to seek any additional financing for that equipment, it would be obtained through general funding. That will conclude the chief and I's presentation for the annual military report.
The chief didn't say a word.
I'll jump in real quick. As Lieutenant Irannis mentioned, pages twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four were things that we left out last year that after kind of further evaluating, we felt that we needed to include them. On page twenty-four, simunitions, that's something that we strictly train with and we would never utilize on the public. It's amongst just training with our officers, but that is considered military equipment pursuant to this bill, so we included that. And then lastly, Lieutenant Irannis mentioned that if I approve, but it's actually you, page thirty, we're requesting these three items. We have no funding for these, and these are just things that we potentially might want to pursue this year, but we need to have council's approval prior to even evaluate them. So even if you approve them tonight, there's a potential that we won't even have the funding to buy them, but per this law, we have to get approval before we can even explore that. So we're asking for those three additional items. We're asking that you approve the annual report and renew the resolution from last year, and then Policy Section seven oh-six.
Thanks. I think on behalf of all of us, this is an incredible amount of work that went into this report, and I'm pretty sure when they passed this legislation, nobody accounted for the hours that it would require for you to document this. So thank you for doing such a thorough job on the detail, it's really impressive.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thanks, yeah. All right. Questions for staff?
Actually, Lynn, I disagree. I think when they made this law, they did it purposely to cause angst and heartache for the law enforcement agencies to make their jobs even more harder. But it was nice of you to say that.
I was trying, I was feeling a little cheerful after the gateway chicken thing, so I was kind of in a good mood. No, I don't disagree. Thanks. Matt?
I was going to say what Drew did.
You guys are a little skeptical here. Anyone else? Vaughn? I guess what you should have said is, it didn't come with money to do the report. How about that? That's probably what I meant. Sorry, go ahead.
A lot of this says no use, but can you repeat again how important it is to have for the enforcement, but also the safety of our officers?
It's extremely important. Having that equipment gives us the availability to have options. Just because that equipment was not utilized, it was still brought on scene, unfortunately, these critical incidents happens, you cannot pause or have a rewind button. And to make sure that we maintain safety to the community and safety to all department personnel, it's extremely vital. Every year, the equipment is changing and evolving, but unfortunately, so are the individuals that we use them against. They also do their research, they do their homework, and they learn our capabilities of this equipment. So it's extremely important to maintain the Clovis way of life and the safety to everyone.
And does this add to attract people who want to work with us because we have, you know, the ability to be sort of at the cutting edge and being able to protect and/or use? Or does this not really have a factor into that at all?
I would say would have an advantage, especially in today's times with how the world is. It's definitely an advantage to have this equipment, so to train that personnel, that's one thing they look at, is maintaining their safety, but also the efficiency of maintaining the safety to the public, but providing that level of service that we depend on.
I just want to go on record agreeing with Drew and Matt that they knew exactly what they were doing when they made it even more difficult for our police departments to have the resources and equipment that they definitely need to do their job to the high level that we are fortunate enough to have our Clovis Police Department doing. Well, I think the point about, we just did the homework for people. We just gave them a whole list. We have all these things. If you'd like to have anything that's more than we have, here's what we have. I think, we talk about all Prop forty-seven and all of that, but these sorts of things have an insidious impact on public safety that aren't as popular as, you know, AB one oh-nine and all of that. So I do, it just, it does feel very calculated, for sure. I did mean that the bill didn't come with money, but I mean, I don't disagree, but I think it's just, I can't find a reason why we need to tell you what we have that we're going to use against you. That's just, that doesn't make any sense. And I think the most important part is, I think you both mentioned it, but the points that you have, I probably can't turn to it quick enough, but simply having it doesn't mean we're ever going to use it, right? I think that's the belief that police who have this are going to use them on every call, or some, right? That's not how it works. But those that are opposed to law enforcement being prepared, that's what they think. So anyway, enough of that. But anyway, good job on their part, whatever the motivations, but thank you for doing that.
I have something real quick.
Yeah.
There are good people who, there's a concept called the militarization of Mayberry, where people, when it used to be the police officer who came to your door, or the deputy sheriff, they had a dry-cleaned uniform, a hat, shiny shoes, you know, they didn't have, they didn't have all sorts of equipment on, they weren't wearing a bulletproof vest, they weren't wearing a load-bearing vest. And I think that it, sometimes, there's a, there's a concept where they talk about sheepdogs. Sheepdogs scare the sheep too, because they look like the wolves. The difference is where the sheepdogs. And there are people who, they're good folks, it just, the fact that their law enforcement officers need to wear and have that stuff scares them. And they wish it wasn't that way, and you can, you know, we can all wish, but unfortunately, this is the reality of our society.
All right. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone online?
No.
And we didn't receive any public comments on this, I don't think. I'll bring it back to the council. There are two items. One is just, I think, receiving the, I guess, approving the annual review. Do you want approval?
Yes, ma'am.
So approving the annual review and then renewing the ordinance twenty-two dash oh-three and Policy number seven oh-six.
Madam Mayor, if I could, just for the record, the resolution in the packet tonight on page one fifty-six of the packet references a twenty-twenty-three annual military equipment report, the police department's report, great report. It's dated twenty-twenty-two because it's basically a look-back report, so we'll just note the correction in the resolution. It'll be referred to as the twenty-twenty-two annual report for twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, thanks. We entertain a motion if somebody was prepared to do that? Matt?
I'll make a motion to approve the annual review of the police department's Policy seven oh-six on the twenty-twenty-two annual report that's noted as a twenty-twenty-three annual report.
And then, do you want two motions, Scott?
We can do them all in one. The first, I think A is really just the annual review, the actual approval is, I think B, the resolution itself, but yes, you can combine them.
Okay. And then also to approve the renewing ordinance twenty-two dash zero-three and under Policy seven oh-six.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You bet. Our last item tonight is item number seventeen, considering various items associated with approximately one point zero four acres of land located on the north side of Alluvial between Sunny Side and Fordham Avenues, stallion development and construction. Armon, help me, why can't I say your name? What is wrong with me? Zakarian. Lord. Owner, applicant Dan Zack, representative. The two items are, consider first vacating the denial of GPA twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-one from the March sixth, twenty-twenty-three meeting. It was a vote of three in favor, one opposed, one absent, with Mayor Pro Tem Wanatua voting against the denial, and Councilmember Pierce was absent. And the second item, oops, second of three is reconsidered approval of GPA twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-one, a request to amend the general plan to redesignate the subject property from low-density residential to the medium-high classification. And the third item is to reconsider introduction of an ordinance, rezone twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-one, a request to rezone the subject property from the R-17500 zone district to the R-2 multifamily medium-high. And just as a refresher, this item was brought back because we did not have a full council, and I think we made, I made some errors in managing the meeting process, one hundred percent, and I think we learned some things from staff and what, things that maybe were not as clear in the report that could have been regarding the larger footprint, Alluvial Avenue improvements that are planned, and some of the references that some of the neighbors had made that kind of, I think, swayed the council. So with a new set of facts and a new set of, a clearer report. Lilly?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. So as indicated, we are back at the request of council to reconsider this item with additional information to be provided, or that has been provided in your staff report, and with some changes and clarification. We'll go over some of that information this evening. So just as a reminder, at the last March sixth council meeting when this item was considered, council did approve the CEQA findings of a mitigated negative declaration with a four-zero-one vote, so just wanted to make that clear. The GPA was denied with a three-one-one vote, and no action was taken for the rezone because its consideration is contingent upon the general plan amendment approval. And then, just as a refresher, this is the project that's associated with the general plan amendment and rezone request. It's a twelve-unit multifamily complex with ten two-bedroom units, two three-bedroom units, access, two access points proposed from Alluvial Avenue, with internal parking provided by garage and uncovered parking stalls, and then a kind of centrally-located two-story building with open space. So before kind of moving on to the discussion items, I'd like to kind of just remind or give an overview of what a general plan amendment entails, and go over some of the findings required for approval of a general plan amendment. So as council is aware, the city's general plan is its blueprint for meeting its long-term vision for the future, and includes things like goals, policies, and diagrams. Amendments may include amendments to goals, policies, actions, land use designations, and/or texts of the general plan. And amendments may be initiated by the council, by the planning commission, through urgency measures, and by property owner. The city council is the decision-making body for all general plan amendments, and amendments may only be approved if specific findings are made, and we'll go over those. So when evaluating general plan amendments, staff refers to the following findings that are codified in the ordinance, the city's ordinance. The first of which is that the proposed amendment is internally consistent with the goals, policies, and actions of the general plan. So this information was laid out for city council in the initial staff report to council on March sixth, which is also included as an attachment to the staff report for this evening's reconsideration. Those policies generally include providing for a mix of housing types and sizes, city with housing opportunities for all ages and incomes of residents, providing a variety of housing project types suitable to each state of a person's life, contributing to a diversity of housing, and then some smart growth goals, which includes creating a range of housing opportunities and choices, providing a mixture of land uses, strengthening and direct development towards existing communities, infill-type developments, and taking advantage of compact development design. So again, those policies were laid out in the original staff report to council. The second finding is that the proposed amendment would not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of the city. This project was distributed to other departments in the city, including PD, fire, public utilities, or engineering division, and there were no concerns when it came to, when it comes to the serviceability of this development that's being proposed, and in addition to no concerns when it comes to health and safety. And the third finding is that the parcel is physically suitable for the requested anticipated project. So this is where site-specific details of the project comes into play. Site plans and elevations help staff to make this finding, and so essentially what we do is we, the site-specific details, such as the site plan and elevations, help staff demonstrate that the development capacity, the development capacity of a project, and confirming whether or not it could meet the proposed land use that is being, that is, the proposed land use and the proposed zone district development standards. In this case, that is the low, the medium-high density designation and the R-2 zone district development standards. So the site plan and elevation shows that the project can meet the building height, the building setback requirements, access requirements, parking requirements for the R-2 zone district or multifamily-type development. And then the fourth finding is that there is compelling reason for the amendment. Those compelling reasons provided to council in the initial staff report includes the project developing an underutilized vacant infill site, providing alternative housing types to the area, and contributing towards the city's housing stock. Now, I do want to point out that the council is the decision-making body and has the discretion to determine whether or not these reasons are compelling. So the same for rezone requests, there are findings required to approve a rezone, however, I'm not going to go any over any of those, just because they are a reiteration of the general plan amendment findings. All righty. So at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the trip generation analysis that was conducted for the that was conducted for the project. And that we want, I wanted to take this opportunity to kind of just clarify the purpose of that trip generation analysis. It was performed to determine whether or not a full traffic impact study would be required. And the analysis was conducted by a third-party professional, in this case, JLB Traffic Engineering. And it was also vetted by the city engineer. The analysis compared the, the trip generation for the existing designation versus the proposed development. And the results, as you see in this table here, shows a minimal increase in the daily trips for the, for the AM and PM peak hours. So the table essentially shows that there are a total of four, for, a total of increase in four trips for both the peak hours, the AM and PM peak hours. And therefore, a full traffic impact study was not warranted because of this minimal increase. This information was also provided in the environmental analysis that was approved with the mitigated negative declaration that was approved by council at the last meeting. At the last meeting, there were also discussion about the existing Alluvial Avenue configuration. And concerns were expressed by both council members and residents living in this area of the potential for traffic collisions when eastbound traveling vehicles stop to make a left turn on, into Fordham Avenue. And this is also where Alluvial Avenue transitions from a eastbound two lanes to a single lane. And so there are concerns that when vehicles stop to make a left turn, continue, vehicles from behind could potentially, you know, hit them. So this section of Alluvial Avenue between Sunnyside and Alluvial includes four lanes, two eastbound and two westbound. However, there's this about 1,000-foot section where going eastbound on Alluvial, it transitions in, from two lanes to a single lane. And as discussed in the last meeting, that was because, that is because of a large undeveloped property on the south side of Alluvial. So a temporary solution could be the incorporation of a two-way left-turn lane. And a concept of that has been provided in the staff report as figure three and is also, will also be shown in the next slide. Engineering staff will be evaluating alternatives to alleviate this traffic concern, which also includes the option of a two-way left-turn lane. This would occur during, with the CIP resurfacing project for this section of Alluvial Avenue, which is planned for design in this upcoming fiscal year with physical work to be, to be completed the following fiscal year. So this is that concept of the, of a two-way left-turn lane for the actual general section here of Alluvial Avenue. What that will do is that will reduce Alluvial Avenue to a two-lane road with one eastbound and one westbound, and then a continuous two-way left-turn lane at the center. This configuration actually exists on Alluvial Avenue just to the west of Sunnyside.
Then I have a question. Can I ask a specific question about this? I'm glad it's bigger here because I was having a hard time with this. If I'm coming eastbound on Alluvial from Sunnyside, if I'm looking at this correctly, it's going to be very similar to what's on the remainder of Alluvial. There's going to be a center turn lane, a eastbound lane, a westbound lane, bike lanes, and parking. Is that correct?
I think so. I think it would probably be best if either Sad or Mike kind of clarify the design.
Right, and let me follow that up while Mike's coming up here. Looking at the, at the bottom left, where you're, you're looking at Fordham and Sunnyside, Fordham and Alluvial. The lane that's there, is that going to be a right-turn-only lane? What is that lane that's, that's there? On the bottom right, bottom left-hand side? Right there. What is, that lane is what? Is that for people to turn onto Fordham?
And so you're not seeing the whole picture going west? That's a continuation of the bike lane. It kind of lines up the bike lane.
So if, if I'm driving, so it's going to be very similar to the remainder of Alluvial. If I'm driving eastbound and I want to turn onto, is it Fordham? Yeah, I want to turn onto Fordham if I want to go southbound. I live in a home on the south part of that. I would transition into the bike lane and make my turn. Like, just like the rest of it, okay?
Yes.
The, when we're looking at, I mean, I realize we're talking future stuff here. I've looked at this, I, I think we're going to have a difficult time widening that because of those, those towers that are there and the guidelines. But it does, it looks to me, Carrie, can you bring up the, the map? While she's looking at it. It does look to me like we could potentially grab maybe 100 feet, 200 feet of the, of the roadway before we end up getting to those guidelines. So I mean, I, I think that probably, I don't know if we can bite off that bigger piece. Maybe we'll get the thing up here so I can be more articulate, yes. Go, go, just go in the middle there on Alluvial and just magnify that, if you would, a little, and go that way.
East, yeah.
Thank you. You can see the, go to the right, yeah, keep going, please. You, you can see the, you can see the shadow from one of the, the towers there.
Yeah.
And then there's guidelines that are, they're pretty thick metal guidelines. But we could probably grab, I'm, I'm thinking, and I, and you're, you're the engineer, but unfortunately, you'll be retiring. We should be able to grab a little bit of that land to make at least a transition lane, I, I would think, or...
I, I don't think so. And maybe if you go to Street View, Carrie, you can see a little bit better.
You said something about some underground power that we're not positive for.
There's an underlying grid that extends out to, and in some places extends into Alluvial Avenue.
Oh, boy.
And the guy wires from the towers go pretty close to the existing pavement. And I don't know if you can get in a position where you can see the guy wires.
Yeah, I, I drive by this and I did see that and I was like, oh, boy.
Yeah. So we, we explored this with the property owner for about a year in the past when we were contemplating doing a project. And we ended up not acquiring it because it was just too complicated and the liability was just too high for us to do that, so.
But in your opinion, as traffic engineer, if we were to replicate Alluvial between Clovis and Sunnyside to this area, make the middle turn lane, one travel lane, the bike lane, and parking, we're good, in your opinion?
We, we are, but we want to evaluate it because simply adding the two-way left-turn lane does introduce potential other issues because of the opposing positions of the streets.
Right.
So we would have to kind of decide which the lesser of the two evils is on that.
I, I live close in Alluvial. And when I moved into the house, it was four lanes. And it was, it was loud, it was fast. And when they changed it to the, to configuration now, it slowed the traffic down because you didn't have the ability, you didn't feel like you could pass on the right because there was no lane for you to pass on the right. So I, I think...
It is a good, it is a good configuration.
Yes, I, I, I agree. I, I think that if we can replicate that, we can mitigate some of the, at least the traffic concerns that I had. That's all I have, thank you.
Go on, Lilly.
Thank you, Mike. So at the last meeting, there was some reference to properties surrounding the project site. And one of those include the church site. And although we did mention that the church had plans to, for future expansion, there really wasn't a visual to represent, to, to depict that. And so I wanted to provide this opportunity to show council with the, the concept that was approved with the condition use permit for the church site here. So there is an existing, what looks like a residence that now is utilized for a prayer hall in this general area here. And then a proposed kitchen here, which they are paying permits for soon. And then this very large building down here is a roughly 20,000 square foot kind of multi-use type building. And then the parking is kind of situated along the, the east side of the project site. The church site will also be responsible for finishing out the cul-de-sac for Carrie Avenue.
I think that's, I think that's important, just to kind of understand the corridor, right? The whole corridor will be filled, but it isn't like you're going to go along, go along apartments, nothing. So I think that's, thank you for adding that back in, for adding that in.
Okay, so comments were made about the initial building design not fitting the characteristics of a residential neighborhood. And so the applicant went back to the drawing table and came up with the design that you see at the bottom of this slide here. The major change, changes include the change in the roof line. It went from a linear flat roof to a cross gable type roof, which is again, a lot more reflective of residence. And then the color and materials will also change from the earth-toned stucco and faux wood cladding to a combination of a creamy white stucco and stone veneer. This is the Alluvial-facing elevation. And then here is the north-facing elevation. And then the east and west-facing elevation. As you can see, the applicant is continuing to not include windows on the east-facing elevation, which is closer to existing single-family residences. Alright, so at the last meeting, we had a neighbor, neighbor speaking in opposition of the project, referenced policy, general plan policy 3.6. The resident referred to policy 3.6, pointing out that the project is not consistent with this policy because it, the policy only allows for projects to deviate one density level and this project is requesting to deviate two density levels. So this policy here encourages development to provide a mix, mixture of housing types and sizes. And to accomplish this, the policy allows projects that are larger than five acres to develop at densities that are either one higher or one lower than the assigned land use designation density and without having to do a general plan amendment. And, and that's the key here. This is called density averaging, which we do do throughout the city. So because the project proposes, actually proposes a general plan amendment to increase the overall density and does not rely on this density averaging, the concern that was cited by the resident is not applicable in this situation. And the request to amend a general plan designation is really not limited to one step or, you know, above or below an existing designation. So staff didn't have the opportunity to clarify this, this policy at the last meeting, which may have impacted some of council members' perception of the project. Alright, so with that, because this is a reconsideration, council will need to vacate the previous denial before reconsidering the general plan amendment and rezone. Therefore, staff's recommend, recommendation includes that council vacates its previous denial of the project and then reconsider approval of general plan amendment 2022-001 and rezone 2022-001. This concludes my report and I am open for questions.
Thank you very much, Lilly. Any questions for staff?
I just have one question. And I would actually request that maybe this be factored into future staff reports on projects where this would be a potential component of it. And that is SB 9 and how that legislation factors into the developers' options with this property. Because I know that a lot of the concern from residents has to do with it being a two-story apartment complex. And the facts are that that comes before our planning commission and then comes before our council because of this general plan amendment component. But there's also that SB 9 option, which is a buy-right situation. So if you could explain that and then kind of give us a little background on how that would factor into what council decides to do with these issues before us on this particular project.
And Lilly, before you answer, I will say, we did talk about that at the last meeting. And when I had a chance to meet with the developer, we did look at a buy, at the four-lot phenomena. And it's actually, it's a very, I don't know. It, it's a really unattractive, unappealing, super-close-to-people Spencer. So we did talk about that as an option and I, I think that the developer looked at that. And I think the other question I saw in one of the letters is about the two-story, right? But I, maybe you can, when you speak to the item, but I think you said that it was 90 feet from the, the edge of the building to the backyard of the house. Because that's a long way. So I think we, the, the developer, I think, was, was mindful of that. So I just wanted to let you know that we did talk about both those things. But the SB 9, you could draw it out, but it's, it's a very, because you take out all the land, you need a cul-de-sac, and then the houses are like right on the fence.
And that's, I just want that kind of as part of the record of the conversation. And so, yeah, because I, I mean, I'm looking at the SB 9 option. And so I just want to make sure that residents understand that as we're considering this specific project as a two-story apartment complex, that there's kind of a door number three. And so I think it's important for the entirety of the conversation. I mean, I guess maybe in honor of older Americans Month, I'll throw a Let's Make a Deal reference out there. And so, you know, if residents think door number one is single-family residential, door number two is this apartment complex. There's also a door number three, which we'll call SB 9, and it's the donkey. And so I just think it's important, again, for the residents who have concerns to understand that there's more to it than maybe they understand at this point in time. And so I just wanted that to be part of the conversation.
Yeah, sounds good. So yes, we did discuss this in the last meeting as well. So theoretically, the, with the land, existing land use designation and zoning, the developer could subdivide the site into four single lots and then utilize the SB 9 allowance to build two full residences on each of those lots plus an ADU. They'd have to meet some, some criteria, including setbacks and whatnot. But yes, that can occur theoretically.
And as Mayor Ashbrook was pointing out, with the current apartment complex, 12-unit, 12-unit market rate apartment complex, we have roughly 90 feet between the building structures and residential backyard senses. But with an SB 9 development, you could have significantly less space between building structures and residential senses.
Correct.
To, I mean, to the tune of maybe like four feet, six feet, as opposed to this 90 feet.
Yes, correct.
And SB 9 is, can you, just for the record again, explain what the buy-right aspect of SB 9 would entail for this project?
Yeah, so again, buy-right, it's two full, single-family residences as well as, I mean, it's a separate legislation, but an ADU can also, a detached accessory dwelling unit can also be constructed.
But in terms of like our, the local control aspect of it, would that project come before planning commission, come before council? How would that part of it work?
No, that's absolutely ministerial. It'll be reviewed through PD's staff.
Okay, thanks. I lost my place. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Well, open the public portion and invite the applicant or his representative to, if he'd like to make a comment on this item. Or Dave, do you have anything else to add? Okay. Mr. Zack's last name, a lot easier for me to say. So why don't you send him? Mr. Zach's last name, a lot easier for me to say, so why don't you send him? Just kidding. I'm gonna practice, I'm gonna get it.
The staff presentation was very comprehensive, and we don't have anything to add at this time, but myself and Mr. Zakarian are both here to have answered questions, if you have any for us.
Would you just state your name for the record?
Sure, I'm sorry, Dan Zach.
Thanks, Dan.
Representative for the project.
Thank you. Mr. Zakarian, anything? I, I got it right? Good. All right, uh, anyone else in the audience wish you to comment on this item? Anyone online? Oh, please come on up in the spirit of Price is Right, or whatever game show that was, come on down, or whatever.
Is this still on?
Yep, can you just pull a little closer to you? Thank you so much.
Okay. Um, good evening, my name is Linda Alford from 1538 Bedford Avenue in Clovis. I sure wish that neighbors would, were invited to that meeting that you had with Mr. Zakarian to help discuss issues. If SB9 is our only alternative in this situation, it would be good to hear from you and from staff exactly what the parameters are on that. Because as I researched that, it's very mushy about if that's a first, oh, you know, an owner owns a home and asks for SB9 splits? If its developer can take four addition, um, four adjacent lots and then split them? Because the law says something about not allowing a developer to come in and do that. Okay? I'm just saying different things, and I don't have all the legalese on it or anything. But, um, I do want to thank Dave and Lily. They have gone out of their way to, um, answer questions for me, to contact me. Dave spent an hour with my husband and myself explaining some of the things, and I do appreciate that. Um, there is a quote from the city. "The following goals and policies reflect Clovis's desire to maintain tradition of responsible planning and well-managed growth to preserve the quality of life in existing neighborhoods." Which is, um, my neighborhood is 25 years old. Um, "When Mr. Zakarian and associates presented their design plan, which has gone through some revision, I was very concerned with the second-story balcony windows facing north as they offer 180-degree view of my backyard. And along with neighbors, we expressed the same concern about a loss of privacy." Um, and it's true. I don't know, if somebody came in and did four houses along those four lots, what they would look like. I just know that there aren't very many balconies on houses in my neighborhood. You know, my grandchildren play in my backyard. Um, they swim in our pool. And I don't want to jeopardize their safety. I'm generally not an alarmist and giving, but given some aspects of our society, I was concerned that renters and their guests might have unwarranted visual access to my grandkids. And just as you would want to protect your kids, I do my grandkids. A sweet neighbor, Mrs. Tongue, who I think wrote a letter, she's Asian descent, and she doesn't like to be confrontational. She feels vulnerable that unknown people can view her possessions and her lifestyle from their balconies. Now, it could be that Mr. Zakarian wrote that the front yard, uh, the front, um, development has balconies and that they would have eyes on the street. I don't think you want eyes on your back, um, backyard. If this proposal is approved, I myself and any and all remedies that can be demonstrated to immediately alleviate our concerns would be appreciated. Because trees were introduced as helping with the privacy issues, but they're gonna take time to grow. You know, my grandkids are still gonna be wanting to play in my backyard. It's not clear if the parking garages would provide some privacy. Um, at one point in time, it was talked about the concrete wall would do that, but then they realized, no, the concrete wall is not gonna be tall enough for there's the angle. Um, some drawings show two, 12-foot was listed, some say, um, 12-foot, nine inches. And maybe somebody can clarify that. I don't see if Nick, the architect, is here tonight, because he would most probably have that information.
Are you talking about the height of the fence in that last comment?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm talking, there's, the garages are on the backside.
Right.
And they show a potential of not being a flat roof, but an angled roof.
Right.
The north side was potentially at the higher height, but it is not clear what that height would be. And when you look at it, my husband got, got out his ruler and the drawings and everything, and we were trying to, you know, look at the line of sight. If the garages are at, at increased height, it does eliminate that, um, angled view into people's backyard. Um, and it's possible that the redrawn, um, design plans have different balconies, um, than what was proposed. The first proposed balconies have 180-degree view. I mean, you're looking east and west. Mrs. Tongue's backyard is on the east side, just maybe 25 feet from that balcony. And I can see where she would feel very vulnerable about who could look into her backyard. But if somebody can answer some of those things, that would definitely help. Um, you know, it's not my intent to come here and have that media circus thing happen after the last meeting. Um, because this is really not about, um, providing lower-income housing by any means. It's a market value thing, it's a business venture. Um, I think people need to have business ventures. My husband and I are also landlords. Um, you know, there's a, a variety of housing already in the immediate area. There's two multifamily complexes about a quarter a mile away, and two more within a mile. So there exists some things already. Um, and I do want to end with the thing that, you know, I'm sure this'll maybe bring up something else that'll get reported. But, you know, I, my, I participate with my church in America Prays. And, um, I will continue to remember each one of you, and I hope you have the wisdom of Solomon in all of your, um, business and oversight of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Um, so I made a list of the things that you were asking, and I think that my, my meeting with the developer was, was, um, it's appropriate for a developer to meet with individual elected officials or two at a time, so it's, they don't need to be public meetings. You had, it sounds like you had lots of public meetings, so I don't want you to think there was anything nefarious or secret, it was just I hadn't had a chance to, um, meet with the developer. So thank you for bringing that up. So I wonder if, um, Mr. Zach or Mr. Zakarian could answer the questions? And this is what I heard. So can you speak to the height? Or maybe, is there a map or, um, something we could pull up? Uh, Lily, is there a site plan that could show some distances and heights of buildings and all of that?
Yeah.
About balconies in particular?
You may recall the presentation that I, uh, provided last time had cross-sections, um, showing, um, the, uh, sightlines from the second-story balconies, um, and how the garage, which I think is about 12 feet high, um, and the fence and the vegetation, you know, block, um, obscured those views. Um, I have that presentation on a flash drive in my pocket, but it's not, um, you know, loaded up, um, at, at this time on the city's computer. So, um, but, um, yeah, we, we provided that analysis with the original amount.
I think it's still not clear to the Alfreds, that's all I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
So can you, can you tell us what the distance from the parking garage to the back fence? Just roughly, do you know what that distance is?
From the parking garage to the back fence is around 30 feet. It's about a 24, 25-foot, I think, um, driveway, and then, you know, another five feet or so of landscaping.
And so from the living area, which is much farther?
Right, that's more in the neighborhood of 92, 93 feet.
Okay, so from the, from the, the distance, from the livable space to those, at least those houses? How about on the, um, I've lost my bearing there.
To the, to the east.
East and west side, what are those distances?
Yeah, to the west is, is the vacant site that has to be developed.
Right, oh, that's right, that's right, that's right.
And then to the east, it's about 45 feet.
Okay. And can you speak, so there?
That site has no, um, windows also.
No windows? Can you speak to the balcony configuration on the east side?
Yeah, so, um, thanks, Lily, that's, yeah, that's perfect. So, um, so, uh, the, you know, the bottom right image, I think, shows pretty well how the balconies are configured. So this is looking from the east, so that, that's the windowless wall, uh, that's the wall that's 45 feet away. So, um, um, that's the closest point to any residences, no windows to block those views. And you can see the, the balconies, uh, really don't open up to the side much. The main opening is to the left, which would be south, and to the right, which would be to the north. Um, and to the left is just the street, um, to the right is, that's the 92 or so foot, uh, uh, distance, which is blocked by the garage and the trees and so forth.
Okay. And then can you speak to the landscaping and the tree planting around the perimeter of the property?
Yes. Oh, sorry. I, I project pretty well, I think, but, um, I want to be on the record here. Um, so, yeah, so the spacing shown, um, has actually been, um, increased, um, in the current version of the landscaping plan, so that there's really no, no spaces between them. So, uh, in a couple of years, once they, um, mature, they will, um, form a continuous wall, a giant kind of hedge row, um, sort of, of wall. They're fast-growing, and Mr. Zakarian has committed to getting the, the biggest ones he can get in there so that they, uh, have a nice head start, and they're not starting from, from, uh, little tiny, um, trees. The fence itself is six feet tall, that's city code. Um, the site sits two and a half or three feet lower than the adjacent single-family lots. So effectively, on the apartment side of the fence, it would be eight and a half or nine feet tall, um, for, for those folks, they're a little bit lower. So that helps actually to block some of those, those views.
Okay. Um, Mr. Zofford, I think that was all your questions? No? The two-foot grade differential makes it easier to see into your backyard? Is that what you said? From the balconies? Okay.
Respectfully disagree.
Yeah, we, we all can't talk at one time. Hold on, hold on.
Um, yeah, I, I respectfully disagree, uh, for lack of a better visual. I can see you worse now. I can see you better now. Being high is generally a better vantage point to look down, um, which is, which is why some people, um, you know, are apprehensive about second-story balconies, more so than first-floor patios, right? So the, the project site being sunken down does obscure the views a little bit more.
Okay. Um, did you have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I think the fence as proposed is at seven feet from the highest, from highest grades.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you, Lily. So, yeah, so that makes it nine and a half to 10 feet, effectively, from the project site.
And then if you guys, if you in the back row had a comment, you'll have to come up here and talk into the microphone so we can hear you too. Thanks. All right, uh, Drew?
The, uh, Mr. Zach, the, the fence itself is block light?
Yeah, it'd be concrete block, yeah.
Okay. And I, I
CMU.
I don't want to impugn any of the neighbors on their fences, but some of the fences there are in pretty bad condition, so that, that would actually, there's a benefit to the neighbors with you coming in and putting in that, well, I would hope that it's, that it's a benefit for them.
It'll be, it'll definitely be a, a sturdier, more robust, you know, fence than, than a conventional wood fence.
Okay, thank you.
Just promise me that you don't put it next to their fence, okay? And leave their fence there. Please don't do that.
Yeah, the, Mrs. Zakarian has, uh, you know, we've talked about his willingness to work with that to make sure that, uh, either fences are replaced or that the, the juxtaposition is harmonious.
That would be great. All right, any other questions for Mr. Zach or Mr. Zakarian? All right, all right, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Other neighbors want to comment on this item? Looks like you drew the short straw on this one.
Uh, my name's Mark Diches, I live at 1536 Bedford, so I am due east on that west side. I have the biggest exposure to the, uh, to the development. I've had a, the biggest exposure to the previous owner of the house that was there also. The first one who built it and sold all the land around him, uh, Dr. Leatherman, uh, he's a chiropractic guy, he has business, was, I think, in Madera. And then the second owner, which was a nightmare, and, uh, won't disparage him at all here, but, uh, it was the worst-case scenario for a neighbor. So, uh, when we noticed that he no longer was there was when we looked on Zillow and saw that, uh, the property had sold. Um, first, and this is where my sympathies are with, uh, with Armon, um, I was dumbfounded at the cost that, uh, that person got. I mean, flabbergasted. Um, it's public knowledge, it's easy to find out, but I, you know, I don't feel comfortable saying how much, but it was a lot of money for a house and, and one acre of, uh, landlocked, of dead end, of what's going on with this place, you know? Um, so anyway, uh, from the get-go, uh, Armon has been a great communicator with what he wants. You know, great, no complaints. He's doing everything that he possibly, possibly can. My problem is, we keep, we keep on this decision, we keep repeating the same things that have been brought up from the day one, from our first time meeting with him, the three times, the one time with the planning commission, which, um, that comes from me that that was a nightmare, um, horrible experience, um, to the last meeting, which I kind of felt like, I think I even heard Armon say, "I didn't even know what happened." I couldn't, you know, I couldn't follow it, uh, okay.
My fault, my fault, that was my fault.
Well, no, it's, I think, one of, let's, let's, uh, just that we don't need to recover them again. SB9 has absolutely nothing to do with this transaction. I'm sorry, it doesn't. It has a worst-case scenario, sure, absolutely. At the planning commission, Mr. Hinkle explained the worst, worst-case scenario to us, but of course, that's what was gonna happen if we don't choose this. I kind of hear him that again, that there's only three choices. There's not three choices. There's a lot more than that. Um, I am sorry that, uh, this moneymaking project is tight. Uh, Armon's, uh, has admitted that, you know, he's in it for the long haul, this is gonna be, you know, and 12-unit rental property is a fantastic investment, and, and, you know, be it one of the best places to live, you know? It's, it may not be able to be pulled off because it doesn't fit, it's impractical. There is no way that the traffic is gonna be mended until it's fixed. Um, even with that, again, uh, you know, the property wasn't, uh, the property wasn't, uh, vacant. It became vacant after the purchase by the developer. It became vacant. The traffic, uh, analysis, again, which is, again, a formula, and it's still not, no one's walked out there, have the, that doesn't count counting cars or watching flow or anything, right? It's a, it's a standard formula that a third party has done. That's still not a study. There is no way that the quantitative number is four. If it's four times the 12 units? If it's four times the twelve units plus whatever else comes, uh, which drivers in that, maybe, but that, that, that whole thing made no sense to me whatsoever as a, as something we can use as a tool to make this decision. The, if you could put on the overhead for me, please, Alluvial Avenue, again, at Fordham. Uh, there's something really glaring, uh, the overhead, not the street view, you can... So Fordham, it's not a four-way stop, Fordham is split, you can see right there. So, if that middle lane is a, is a turn lane, like, is the best possible solution, I agree, and to keep, keep the integrity of the bike lane, there's still no parking along there. So again, we're still talking about how many cars in that parking lot, you know, uh, and visitors, et cetera. Also, if you're heading west, back down Alluvial, heading west, and you come up to Fordham to turn east, there shows also that middle lane, you can turn left onto Fordham, which is another hundred and fifty feet down. So where is the, uh, south, uh, the east, on Alluvial heading east to turn on our Fordham, I'll call it for lack of a better, on the east side? Those are two cars looking at each other, right there. Each one, you know, with two other, with one other lane on either side, with traffic whizzing by. If you've gone down that intersection one time, just because it narrows to one road, does not stop one person from passing you, not one. You get a horn honk or, you know, whatever. Uh, us that live there are aware of that. Now, this also goes back to this nice little neighborhood, the planning, everything like that. On the other side of Bedford, that now goes into Sunnyside, there is a week, uh, a weekend and sometimes weeknight problem with the parents of the people that are going there, and they park where it clearly is marked, no parking, no stopping at any time. If, uh, there was a traffic, I, I am the guy, I have called, I don't know, since I've lived there these last, uh, I believe it's twenty-seven years, but, you know, uh, anyway, uh, that is a dangerous corner. You cannot see because it is on an angle to the, if, when you leave, if you look to the, uh, south, you can't see past those houses because of the angle. And I distinctly remember when those were being built, the, this process going, and they stuck two extra lots in there. And if anybody's ever been on the, on the down Bedford on that side, and if you sit, look to the right, you'll notice there's two houses that can't even fit their garage, their garbage carts through the gate.
Would you mind wrapping up your comments if you don't mind?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm ranting. But also, see, there's, so, I, I feel, I feel bad for the developer. This is just not a great idea right now. Two houses, why not have two, the, two fine houses there? Why, 'cause again, it's ridiculous that this has anything to do with affordability, diversity, anything.
I think that is-
It's just not, uh, it's just not a point.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, you bet, thank you so much. Others? Back row, back there, anything back there? Oh, yeah, go ahead. We won't hold it against you that your household's already talked, no, I'm just kidding, just kidding.
She goes first.
Uh, good call, good call.
My name's Darren Alvord, I'm, I live at fifteen thirty-eight Bedford, over, just over the, the fence there. Uh, I'll go back just to the fundamentals, uh, Clovis is a beautiful place because of excellent planning. This is bad planning, uh, this doesn't fit. You have, if you're changing general plan by two levels, it's already suspicious. Uh, and if, if you're changing the, re-changing, changing the zoning, uh, in that one little area, if, if a dermatologist was to look at the map, he'd say, "I'm sending that to the lab because that's a malignancy." It's something that this council, uh, should not want to approve because that's a slippery slope. I wouldn't do it here, sorry.
Thank you.
I would avoid it.
Thank you, appreciate your comment.
May I stay within my time?
You did an excellent job.
Okay.
Do you want to yield back to the neighbor from the other side? I'm just, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Do you have anything you guys want to add? No, you're good? All right, uh, and then I already asked, online, nothing? All right, we'll close the public portion and we will bring it back to the council.
Mayor, if I may, um, there's a couple of points that staff wanted to kind of just clarify or respond to.
Okay.
Um, the first of which, I hate to bring SB nine back up, I apologize, um, uh, Ms. Alfred did make a statement about, uh, uh, the SB nine process and splitting of lots, uh, through that process, requiring the owner to occupy one of those lots. Um, just to be clear, SB nine has two components to it, one of which is a lot split, where, um, yes, it would be required that the owner would, uh, reside in one of the residents there. Uh, the other component to SB nine is the allowance for the building of two full residences on, on the parcel. In this situation, um, or the alternative that Mrs. Zakarian could be looking at with utilizing the SB nine process is not utilizing the lot split component of it. It'll have to go through a traditional parcel map to split that lot into four separate lots. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, Lily, thank you for that.
And then, uh, the other point I think Dave wanted to make?
Yeah, we, we understand the, uh, the concern or the uncertainty that, um, everybody has when they see that the trip generation numbers and how can, how can the numbers be so low? Um, we, we've heard similar comments about other multifamily projects. And so just to clarify what, what we're looking at in those very small numbers are peak hour numbers, um, and every, every traffic analysis uses the same source, whether it's a, uh, a new shopping mall or a Costco or a subdivision or an apartment complex. All traffic analysis are based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers that looks at, um, these massive studies to determine what the distribution of, of trips are by daily trips and, and peak hour in both the AM and PM. Uh, so this is the source of information that all studies rely on. Um, it may not seem intuitive, but it basically reflects the fact that, um, people that live in the same complex, um, all have different types of jobs, they have different demands, they have different family types. Um, you know, those of, those of you who, who have families know that you don't always leave at the same time as your spouse or your kids or your, your in-laws if they live with you. Um, and that's what gets reflected in those peak hour, uh, numbers. So it may not be terribly intuitive, um, but those are the numbers, um, and we do stand by them.
Thanks, Dave. All right, we will, uh, end the public conversation about it, bring it back to the council for your comments or deliberation or action or all the above.
Uh, I have two disclosures, one, I did meet with the applicant following the last meeting, uh, and two, I live, my residence is in the area of Clovis and Alluvial. It is outside of the area, I, it's far enough where I can vote on this. I don't feel like I have a conflict, you know, emotionally or ethically on this. Uh, so I, I do plan on, on making my vote note on this.
All right, any other comments on this application or, Diane?
I just wanted additional clarification from the city attorney, if possible, on the, kind of the procedural component of the SB nine aspect. Thank you, Lily, for the clarification on the two components of it, but in terms of whether or not SB nine does indeed apply to this situation as an alternative for this proposal. If we deny this proposal, is SB nine and the lot splitting but into like four parcels and that, does that apply here?
Yeah, I don't think it's, uh, it's certainly not on the table, at least as far as I know. He, he doesn't have an application for a lot split or anything like that, so it's, it's a little speculative. But as any parcel in, I guess, the state of California, if it meets certain requirements, it could be the subject of a lot split, as this one could. Um, and I don't know if I've, I haven't done any analysis, I don't know if staff has, but they could sub, he could subdivide into four, and then each of those four could further be split into two, depending on the size, you could have eight and then-
Four ADUs.
And then two units on each of those eight. I, I don't know exactly what the, what the numbers are, but I know it could be split in some number.
Yeah, correct, so the, the lot can be split, um, through the traditional parcel map route into four based on the, uh, density allowance, um, for this, this site here. And then theoretically, and if Mrs. Zakarian is interested, can utilize the SB nine, uh, component to, uh, construct two full residences on each of those lots. And then ADUs are also, um, allowed as well, detached ADUs.
So you could have twelve units, twelve units on this parcel, same number as apartments?
Yeah, so the scenario, and this is perhaps where, where Ms. Alfred spoke, that the, the criteria about, uh, a developer not being able to subdivide, uh, multiple lots through the SB nine process comes in, and that, that is accurate. She's, I, I wish, I wish every interested, um, neighbor did as much research as, as the Alfreds have. They've really put some time into it. So the, the criteria, um, are different for an SB nine two-unit project versus an SB nine lot split. Um, a, a, an owner slash developer can't come in and use the SB nine lot split process to subdivide two side-by-side parcels, two adjacent parcels. So theoretically, and you told me when you stopped, want to, don't want to talk about theoreticals anymore?
I'm right about there.
Very, yeah.
It's not on the table right now, so I think, I mean, every, it's always an option, it's California. It's an option in my neighborhood, so I, I mean, I don't mean to cut you off, but, I mean, we could go on all night long, but that's not what he's asking for, so I think, could he do that? Sure, if this fails, will he do that? I don't know, but I think right now it sort of muddies the water, it's still, it's always an option, it's California, along with homeless shelters and everything else in your neighborhood by right. So I think the ship has sailed on all those things. So I'm kind of done with theoreticals, but I don't want to deprive my colleague of additional information. So do you want more?
Can I just get one piece of information? By right, SB nine, how many units could be on this parcel with that consideration by right?
With, with one owner, with the current owner, uh, we believe that he could put twelve units on without having to sell any of the lots. If he sold it, some of the lots, then that number could go up, but based on there being one owner, it looks like it's twelve.
I didn't mean to really stop it, but we could go on all night about SB nine and every single map forever. All right, you good? I don't mean to, you good, sorry, okay. Perfect, thank you, Dave. And thanks for asking the question, 'cause then I could say, "I'm done now." All right, uh, other comments on the, uh, item before us?
I was just gonna make a motion, so.
Do it, you want to?
I would like to make a motion to vacate the denial of GPA twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. Second.
So motion is second to vacate the denial from the March sixth meeting. Is any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries five oh.
Then I would like to make a motion, is it just to approve or to, now Scott? Approve GPA twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one?
Let me just comment before you make a-
Sure, mm-hmm.
I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things real quick. Now, if we're, we're doing the motion on the land, right? Is there, when it goes through the site review process, are there things in there that we can ensure, like the traffic study, like the traffic conditions, and being able to make sure that, you know, um, we do have a traffic lane that, um, fits, turn it into the property during the site review process? Does that make sense what I'm saying? I mean, after, we're just doing the land approval, right, or denial today, based on this project. But after this process, is there a process in place where we can, um, you know, work with the neighbors on the traffic questions that they have or the site, uh, line of sight questions that they have, um, still?
Every, every project goes through, um, a site plan process. In the case of a multifamily project, it could require, specified as the multifamily residential, uh, design review. That, that's, that is an objective standards process, so we don't, we're not able to get too creative with, with, uh, the application of, of standards that aren't in black and white. Um, the engineering department does, does review every, uh, project to make sure that the driveway locations are, are safe and meet standards. Um, here, I, I think, um, I invite the city engineer to, to come and speak on this, but, um, I think largely the, the resurfacing and potential restriping project that was described, uh, is probably gonna be about the, the limits of the change to Alluvial Avenue. And I think those driveway locations that are shown, um, in the information that's been presented to you are about where they would have to go. So I don't think that those, that information is probably going to, to change. Um, but I think that, like every project, um, we would ensure that it's, meets our minimum criteria and that it's, um, safe to, um, our standards.
And I think that's what I'm getting at, is because there are a lot of questions about traffic safety part of it, is that as this goes forward, that the engineering department is, obviously they're gonna do this, but, um, ensuring that it is safe for the, you know, the turn lanes or whatever else you come up with for that area. I mean, I know, 'cause we're just doing land here today, so that's just, and I'm learning this process as well, but, um, you know, it's, that's probably, you know, my biggest thing too, is ensuring that, you know, we're, we're gonna be safe as we go forward with something like this. And also there, there are concerns about, you know, line of sight, and I know you've mentioned that, um, you're willing to work even further or whatever you need to do to address that too, so. Um, obviously, nobody wants to be, have people looking in their backyards, so, so I have.
Yep, I think Mayor Potem-
Yeah.
Had a, had a question, if he still had a question for me. Um, I guess now, with the approval of item A, which was vacating the previous denial, the slate is kind of wiped clean now on this, on this project, so to speak. You may recall, uh, council did approve the, I think it was a mitigated neck deck-
Yes.
-at the last one, so the environmental is done, so now items B and C are open. Whether you call them reconsideration or consider approval, I, I think is really inconsequential. It's, it's approval in the first instance is what you're considering.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve GPA twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. Second.
There's a motion is second on item B, amending the general plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries five oh.
And I'll make a motion, is it the introduction of ordinance, I meant twenty-three, something R? It's, it's a rezone, huh?
The requested rezone.
Requested rezone, there's such a property, R twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. Second.
There's a motion is second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, uh, opposed, sorry, motion carries five oh. To the Alfreds, there will still be additionally, you can stay close to Dave and Lily and as the process, as it goes through, 'cause this is just land. Mr. Zakarian might decide just to move to Iowa or something, I don't know, but this is, Iowa? Why not, Iowa? But there's still, there's still discussion, I think, to Matt's point, where some of the questions that you, just to make sure, the landscaping and all of that. I think what's so hard about these projects is we do really excellent planning in Clovis, but it's imperfect, and we end up with these little remainder lots. And every time there's a remainder lot, it is virtually impossible. And I would just say, most of the time, uh, there's a couple near out, where I live, around Temperance and Ashland, that people were up in arms around apartments next to single-family homes, and they really do blend in. So you have a church, multiple fam, multiple family and your neighborhood, it does work over time. But we create this problem ourself with these leftover parcels, and because we can't force anybody to sell or be a better neighbor or a worse neighbor, this happens to us periodically, so this is a difficult spot. But I do think, and I want to, uh, acknowledge your work on the elevations. I am certainly not an architect, so I spoke fairly harshly about that, but I do feel like this at least looks like Clovis, uh, and I think it'll make the visual image down Alluvial nicer, so thanks for that. So anyway, but stay close to the planning team and any questions you have, and I know it sounds like Mr. Zakarian and Mr. Zach are open to keep talking, so we'll get it. and, um, we'll get it. So, thank you for being here, all of you. Thanks, thanks, thanks. All right. City measure comments?
I have none, but I'd like to defer to City Clerk Carrie Chaud to talk a little bit about the Founder's Day celebration we had about ten days ago.
Thanks, John. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. So as you know, on April twentieth, city staff hosted over two hundred third grade students at the Civic Center for a half-day event to celebrate Clovis's one hundred and eleventh year since incorporation. This event was also an opportunity to teach students about local government and possible future careers. All two hundred of the students sat through a general information session right here in the city council chamber to learn about the city council and how local government serves the community. They also had, um, an opportunity to meet and take some photos with Mayor Potem Vong Monatua. Thanks so much, Vong, for staying the entire time to meet all two hundred students.
Nice flag.
Yes, very beautiful flag. So, at this event, every department was represented, and they all presented really fun and educational activities for third grade students. Really high-level stuff, but fun stuff, like where does your poop go? Our engineering team was, uh, very creative. And I also wanted to highlight, um, Mayor Ashbeck shared a really fun idea for an activity, which we were able to have all of the students participated in. Um, they all participated in a writing activity for a potential children's book about Clovis. So I prepared three writing prompts where, um, we gave it to the schools, and they gave it to their students to write in the classroom, and they brought it back to us at Founder's Day. And we received probably nearly all two hundred students, uh, wrote a prompt. So it's really nice, they shared really, uh, cool stories about their experience growing up in Clovis, their favorite places in Clovis, and what they would do to make our city a better place to live. So in front of you, I provided a handout of just a few examples of the students' work, but I have a full stack of them in my office. And I'll scan and share it with you all if you're interested in going through all two hundred of them.
Sounds like we got ourselves a book.
Yes, definitely. Overall, I would say that this event, this first ever event, was a big success. This is a photo of just some of the staff members that participated during the event, but I want to, uh, let you all know that it was a lot of, uh, effort. It took nearly fifty staff members from all of our departments to plan, coordinate, and participate in this event. Founder's Day really could not have happened without the support of the city council and all of the directors. So I'd like to thank everyone for their support and all the hard work from staff in putting on such an incredible and fun event for the kids. I do hope that this is something that we might be able to continue and have again next year. That's all I have. Thank you.
Carrie, thank you so much. I know it's, all of that takes someone to round up all the people, so to speak. Uh, so thank you for leading the work. It was, I'm really sorry I had to actually go to the hospital. What? Do you think I have to go to work sometimes? I didn't want to go on that day, but it was a, I'm sorry to have missed it, but I love these so much. And your prompts are awesome. Like Billy Bronco, Bronco Billy is a new student who just moved to Clovis. What, what is it like? That's so great. So anyway, really awesome. Excellent job. Yay, Carrie. And team, that's super great. Good job. Where does your poop go? No, I'm team, that's a different conversation. All right. Excellent. Excellent. Thanks, John. Anything else? Can't, can't top that. Just let that go. All right. Uh, Matt?
So this last week, I went to waterboard meeting, and with, uh, North Kings GSA. We didn't waterboard anybody, no, I went to a waterboard...
Wait, we went to a meeting about waterboarding? Is that something new we do?
No.
I don't know.
Yeah. No, actually, it was, uh, um, it was very well-run. I mean, they get to the point and get with it, so, but the interesting thing about it was FID's report out on just how much water there is, and, you know, one river was worth, or one basin was two hundred and sixty-nine percent of normal, and the other was two hundred and sixty-two, um, which is, you know, like the highest year ever for the amount of water that we've ever had. Um, but one of the things I wanted to, to, to mention is what FID was doing with a lot of this leftover water, is that they were working really hard to save it, put it into recharge basins, and they were making new basins and, and, and working together. So it was very positive, and it was good to see everybody there for this particular meeting anyways, working together. Um, one member from Fresno was not there, but outside of that, it was, uh, it was a good meeting, so.
Thanks, Matt.
That's all I got.
Thanks. Diane?
I had a fantastic time on Wednesday at the rodeo with the PBR, the Bulls, and one of my favorite things every single time is the mutton busting. And so I thoroughly enjoyed it that evening. Uh, it was fun to have Vong and his boys there too, watching that. That was a good time. And it was really fun too, to then follow some of the other people had mutton busters in some of the other nights, but I just think it's so fantastic, and it's just that throwback of, I mean, the feeling and the atmosphere and all of that. You could think you were there fifty years ago, or twenty years ago, or twenty years from now, and I think we've talked so many times with different topics, uh, on this council about our history, and kind of our traditions, and what makes Clovis Clovis, and I think the rodeo is such a great opportunity to kind of bring a lot of those things together. And so I just want to credit the Rodeo Association, all the people who volunteered, participated, whatever, um, they did to make it such a great experience for the people who got to go there, and just to kind of on the record, put out there my commitment as a member of this city council to do whatever I can to help continue the success of that event, and the kind of iconic nature that it has in this community, and I know that there are people who would like to see it go away, and so I for one will fight tooth and nail to make sure that we keep our rodeo and all its fantastic traditions.
Thanks, Diane. Uh, Drew?
The, uh, Rodeo Association pulled off another one hundred and ninth rodeo. Um, I, I was there one day. Um, my, uh, my granddaughter was a mutton buster, and, uh, she didn't, she didn't take the prize, but she, uh...
She looked cute.
She stuck with it, and so I was real, I was proud of her, and I'm proud of Clovis for pulling this off. Thank you.
Thanks. Vong?
Yeah, we're a couple meetings to, um, report on. I went to the cog meeting on behalf of our city, because mayor was not there. The appointments, except for one person who was not there, were all pointed back to the airport board and all that, city selection committee. And then the draft of the unmet needs of sort of transportation in the county came before the cog, and one of the major issues that council member Carbasi was there on behalf of the city of Fresno, and I think Shauna and Amy has known about this issue already, and I think I was first aware of it when I first come on the council, is we take people who are on, round up all the way to destination, even across the border, but Handy Ride always drops them off at the, either Target and or, or something like that, and then we will then pick them up and then take them to a destination in Clovis. And so we can't, we just reciprocate. And, um, council member Carbasi did not like that, um, they have not been doing that, and he's going to try to figure out why, so I wanted to just give staff a heads up that I brought it up to him again, that we're willing and, and, you know, to work with the city of Fresno to help serve sort of the neediest with regards to transportation in the community, so. And then, uh, we approve all the Measure C TOD applications as well. Um, want to commend Chad and, um, Andy for the, sort of the real estate, commercial residential meeting at, uh, Summer Fox. Good turnout, um, way for us to share what is available, and a lot of developers and brokers came there. Arbor Day was an exciting event, over fifty, about fifty trees donated by the Clovis Community Foundation, and it was so easy. I, the staff made it so easy because they dug all the holes, had all the trees ready, and, you know, just picked it up and put it in, and then put the dirt around, and we were done in fifteen minutes maybe, fifty trees. But, um, the charter school here in Clovis, the Clovis Global Academy, sent out all their kids and parents.
Oh, nice.
So they came out, and then the foundation came out, and then our crews, and then other volunteers came out, so that, that was really nice. It was a good event. I went to the youth housing summit, I forgot her name, she came here to invite us, so went to that, got to meet and see what they're doing over there at Fresno State and some of the youth that came, so, uh, I didn't go on the second day where the congressman was going to come and speak. Founder's Day, excellent, again. Um, John and, and Carrie and the rest of staff, everybody was pretty excited. I think kids automatically just bring joy in, you know, the daily routines of what every one of you do, and for you to be able to come out to share that, I think that's, um, excellent. With regards to rodeo, um, they were sold out almost, almost every day, they said, but they didn't want to put it out there. And so, um, but it is such a success, I think people wanted to be there, and I concur with, uh, council member Pierce, that, you know, this is something we, we need to hold on to, support and keep, because there are certain traditions, whether it's in your religion, in your family, and here it's the city, you gotta keep, because it, it keeps who you are, and, and once you, and like I shared when the Cowboy Channel interviewed me, I said, "I bet you we were feeling the same joy and excitement as that first rodeo of the families that came," because it has not changed much, as in just family who worked hard just come out and enjoy a day, so. And then lastly, you know, when I first got on the council, I asked then city manager Luke Serpa with regards to, "How come all our exits from the freeways, we don't have any signs right there?" And he's, and the response was that Caltrans didn't allow it. So Caltrans was at cog, so I went to the guy, his name is Michael Navara, I said, "Hey, you don't allow us to put our signs? Because when you get off on Bullard exit, you don't see a Bullard sign, so you don't know, is Bullard over there? Do I still make a right to hit Bullard?" And the only sign I see is on Herndon on the forty-one, and you allow that sign, how come you don't allow us to do? And he checked, he goes, "We do allow it, as long as you agree that you will maintain it." So I guess this is to Scott, that, and maybe the council too, if that's something we want, and we want to do on all the freeway exits on the one sixty-eight, I think it, you know, we can make it where people get off and they see, oh, it's Shaw, and it's brown, they're safe, and then the other guy's going to get off on that side, it's green. No, on Shaw, you know, exit on the one sixty. And so I think that's something, you know, maybe we look into, I don't know what it takes, if you need the council to approve first, but doing something like that would be nice on all the freeway, uh, exits for our streets at least.
So you mean when you, I, I'm not following you. You take the Bullard exit, say Bullard, and you get off?
You take Bullard exit. It doesn't say Bullard. Oh, yeah, you get off, but all you see are lights. You don't have a street sign right there, off, off-ramp.
But the sign just said Bullard? I just got off on Bullard?
The signs over here says Bullard, but, but usually, like in other cities, when you get off, when you're, you see it, it's Bullard.
Oh, I see what the, okay.
There's an actual street sign that says Bullard with our...
Okay, I see, okay. All right. I'm with you.
I thought it was...
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you for, um, did I do everybody already? Yeah. Thanks for, um, doing those things for me. I'm sorry I was, uh, out of town last week. Uh, just two items. Um, to the meeting with Mayor Dyer, I was out of town last week, and I didn't get a date before I left, so I'll circle back tomorrow with his team on the water question. I think that's still an open item. And then, because I can't remember what I did yesterday, did I report on FCTA last time? Because we canceled the last, I think I did not. So just to report on FCTA from April, um, I think the two items of note, um, I can't remember now the exact number, but I want to say it was twenty-one million dollars or so that, uh, may back up. Some years ago, FCTA took money out of Measure C to acquire property for high-speed rail, and to hold on to it in case, in case, in case. Well, all those encases have really run out, so, um, and I, I think high-speed rail has been clear that we're not going to be to site for the heavy maintenance facility, because it's never going to be mid-course, it would be at one of the ends of the system. So there was action to take twenty-one million or so of the twenty-five million and put it back in the grade separation fund, uh, toward the McKinley project in the city of Fresno, to finish that project. Still not enough money for the city of Fresno, but our job is not to fund it all, but to put as much money toward that as we could. So that, that action did occur. And then the second item is we were going to review the polling results on people on, on Measure C, why it did or didn't, or why it didn't pass, uh, and the consultant was unable to come due to the passing of his mother. So that did not occur, and there'll be a special meeting in April, I mean, uh, May seventeenth to review the polling results, so that's to come on that. And that's all I have. That's it. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting, uh, and go into closed session. Are we going to report anything out, Mr. Scott, attorney?
Action is an option tonight, so, um, and if action is taken, I will be required to report it out, so we will re, need to reconvene if action is taken and report out any action.
All right. And in the meantime, we will go into closed session to deal with the items printed on the agenda, and thank you all for coming. Thank you.